We're meeting again on this Thursday.
Seems like a good team, though. Yeah, good to see you first, thank you.
Should I preload it now? Well, I can wait. I mean, I'll do it when I can. Which one is this? Some people get confused because there's some there.
Yeah, I was gonna do that. I was like everyone else.
Meeting called to order. Please join me in the prayers. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted to state the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings and all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and just as one.
Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor New.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Ruck.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Getchir.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
11th president.
Thank you. Any moments of silence, any memorials? Counselor Ruck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in dock and chambers for Joseph August Rodriguez, 73, who passed away in August 11, 2022, far in a challenging battle against pancreatic cancer. Joseph was born, raised, and cultured in the city of Lowell by his departed parents, Edith and August Rodriguez. Joseph was a graduate of Lowell High School, class of 1967, in St. Francis Xavier University. He dedicated over 40 laborious years to B&amp;M, Amtrak, and Mass Bay commuter rail. Joe is an extremely generous man who donated to countless charities, including the Megan's House Foundation and various veterans organizations. Joe leaves behind his cherished wife for 43 years in the rain and his two daughters, Deborah and Kim. His son-in-law is Joe and Mike. Joe played a critical role in the lives of his grandchildren, Robert Gignac and his wife Alyssa, Dylan Mitchell, Ashton, and his great-grandchildren, Kennedy and Grant Gignac. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. I just want to say one quick thing. I also had a chance to go to Mr. Rodriguez's wake also. What a wonderful family he has and what a wonderful life he had. Very, very strong, dedicated his entire life to his whole family. So my prayers and condolences to his whole family. Counselor New.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a moment of silence in dock and chambers as well for Marina Sampas Shell, 76, a long-lived president of Lowell, passed away at Lowell General Hospital on Friday, August 12, surrounded by her family. Marina was the only child of Lowell journalist and writer, the late Charles and Mary Sampas. Born in Lowell in 1946, Marina graduated from Lowell High School and received a degree, a bachelor's degree from UMass Amherst and a master's degree from UMass Lowell. Marina and her husband share strong belief and commitment to equality, social justice, and civil rights. They join and support organizations that promote those values. Marina joined the staff of community teamwork in the late '60s, where for more than 10 years, she counseled and placed hundreds of economically disadvantaged youth in work experience program and initiated citywide public art projects for teen. Marina went on to work for the Department of Social Service, Department of Children and Family for 27 years until her retirement in 2011. She served as a social worker program development specialist, area administrative managers of the Lowell office. She's also served on the Board of Directors for Greater Lowell YWCA, the Mental Health Association of Greater Lowell, and on the City Manager Task Force on Domestic Violence. Marina was the embodiment of giving back to the community, and Lowell was blessed to have her among us. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other memorials? Mr. Clerk, dim the light, please. We now go to two, the mayor's business. 2.1, communication remote Zoom participation. Motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Yem, second by Counselor Scott. Motion is passed. We now go to 2.2 introductions, and I'm glad to see this on the agenda today to welcome two new employees that is really needed in the city. So I would like to have introduction to both of them through Mr. Manager to Ms. Christine McCall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, I'd like to introduce Liz Altman, the city's new transportation engineer, and Hallie Carter, the city's new economic development director. We're very excited to have both on board. Both positions have been vacant for quite some time, but both Liz and Hallie have extensive municipal experience, so we're very happy to have them on the team. So I just wanted to introduce them.
Welcome. I want to welcome both of you to our city and to the department. Any other comments by anyone? Here we go. We now go to the citations. And on the first one is for Ms. Christine McCall, and I can see, and if you all can see, how popular, how valuable she has been. By really, the whole chamber tonight is packed with her colleagues, her coworkers, and her friends. I do have a citation for you, Christine, so not to put you on the spot and make you embarrassed. I know you never like these things, but I do like giving citations. I'm going to just read the citation for you first. Official citation, be it hereby known to all that the city of Lowell and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Christine McCall. Christine McCall joined the city of Lowell in 2015 as an assistant planner. She excelled at her responsibilities and quickly advanced adding the additional job titles of associate planner and senior planner. In February of 2020, Christine again advanced to the Director of Economic Development. Christine and her team worked tirelessly throughout the COVID-19 pandemic to assist small businesses during that incredibly challenging time. Capping her city career, Christine was appointed Assistant City Manager Director of Planning and Development in May of 2021. Christine has an American Institute certified planner and graduated with a master's degree in public administration from the University of Massachusetts Lowell while working full-time. Christine has devoted her career in public service to help make Lowell a great place to live, work, and play. Now therefore, I, Mayor Sakari Chow, hereby offer all the best and extend the city's deepest appreciation for your dedication to the city of Lowell as a city employee, and thank you for all that you perform for the benefit of our city and its residents. Given this 23rd day of August 2022, signed by myself and proudly by all the city councils. Congratulations, Christine. And actually, there were two other pages that I could have included in here, but I knew that you would not like that. So again, congratulations. Any comments by any counselor? Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a card appreciation of her service, signed by all the counselor and the city leadership. I'd like to present it to Ms. McCall if it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please, Counselor. Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Christine, you have made an uncountable and immeasurable impact on the city with your roles here, working for the city. You've made the lives of 117,000 people better through your work every day. I just wanted to say thank you, appreciate you, and I'm going to miss you and all your work in the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments from any counselors? Counselor Getchir?
This is really good. You know, normally I'm the one questioning, and I have plenty of questions and all these things for tonight. But like I said a few months back to you is, you know, there's not many employees who do five other people's jobs. And everything that went to the manager's office, it seems that they went to one person they could trust. Even bathrooms that needed to be renovated in a ball field ended up at DPD, which it should go to lands and buildings, and it should be a simple thing. So, you know, when you look at employees today, you stand at the top because your diligence to getting things done. The private sector is lucky to get a person like you, and we can't compete. As sad as that is to say, and maybe you want to change, I don't know. But losing employees like you are always going to be something that's going to leave a void for everybody in between. You know, when the manager's office looks to somebody, every time I get a packet, it's DPD, Christine's on it. So that's going to be a big void to fill, and we thank you for everything you did. I think they're getting a value at whatever they're paying you because there's not someone who's going to work as many hours and do the research that you put in. Even though we may disagree on the things that are in there, it's just about direction, and I think you always had the best interest of the city at heart. And I thank you for everything, and I wish you nothing but the best in the future, and hopefully we get to see you back again.
Counselor Mosier?
Yes, from one woman to another, it took a woman to do the job of five men. So thank you very much for the great job that you did. And we're going to miss you. We will miss you. Thank you so much.
Counselor Robinson?
I'd just like to say the short time I've been able to work with you, I thank you for how informative and descriptive and how much detail you put into your reports when they came back to us, and then also taking the time to explain thoroughly what that information we were receiving is. And I think above all, your can-do attitude is what really stands out and makes a difference, not just for the administration, but for all our residents. So you'll deeply be missed. Thank you.
Any other comments from the counselors? Counselor New?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My friend, you really are an awesome person. You know, you make and you are an invaluable individual, and especially for your department and for this administration. It's going to be a big shoe to fill. But I, you know, hope you all the best, and all you're going to do great at the new place. We have your number, just your local. And yes, exactly. So let us know when the pool parties start.
Thank you. Any other comments from the counselors? Here we go. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. I just want to say thank you very much to the Assistant City Manager for the years that she has provided to this city. The consummate professional that she's always been. The councilors have discussed the dedication and leadership she's shown from every point. When she's answering a motion to the style of leadership of push and pull, she enjoyed that very, very much. We would sometimes argue back and forth. I think she enjoyed that, and putting me in my place more than once. So to a friend, to somebody who we were very fortunate, the city is going to, this is a major loss, a big loss for all of us, but is this something that is extremely good for you? I just want to say thank you. Thank you for everything that you've done for the city. Thank you for what you've done for this administration. You're going to be sorely missed, and if there's anything that I try to tell my daughters all the time is, show up, play like a champion. And that's what you always do. So thank you very much for everything you've done for our city.
Well said. Ms. McCall, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to everyone. I just want to say thank you so much. It's been an honor and a privilege working with all of you. I think we've done some really incredible things for the city and for the neighborhood, and I know that this administration and all of you will continue. There's so much great forward momentum, and I think you're going to take this city to new heights, and I'm going to be the city's biggest cheerleader. I just want to give a huge shout-out to all of the staff in the city, but also in particular DPD, which includes community and economic development, but also the Division of Development Services. It's a staff of 60 people who work hard day in and day out to keep the city safe and clean, and they're planning and investing for an equitable future for everybody. And I wouldn't be able to get all the accolades from all of you and compliments without their hard work and dedication, too. So I just want to say thank you so much, and I'll miss all of you very much.
So now I would like to present the citation to you and take a photo with you to remember you. And I just want to say one last thing. If you don't like the lot more money over there, if you don't like the shorter hours and the free weekends, you're welcome to come back. Thank you. We now, we have one more citation before we go to the public hearing. And this is going to a gentleman in the Cambodian community, one of my favorite persons in the community that you probably would not be able to miss him if you go to Cambodin Town, you go to the temples, you go to any Cambodian events, community events. He's all the place. I'm surprised that he calls himself retired, but he's been in the community for a long time. And thank you to Counselor New for helping me to present to him the citation. So this citation is going to Mr. Kovet Gredd. Mr. Gredd, if you can come to the podium. Mr. Grant, if you can come to the podium. And Councilor Nuan, do you have, you want to read from your writing, or you want me to?
No, Mr. Mayor, you can read it.
Okay, I have up here. Okay, read that. So, on behalf of Councilor Nuan and entire City Council, this citation. This citation be hereby known to all that the City of Lowell in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Mr. Kovet Grant. Kovet Grant is a man of compassion, thoughtfulness, and patience, a Cambodian genocide survivor who began helping refugees and traumatic survivors when he escaped to the Thailand refugee camps. He arrived in the United States with his young brother on Thanksgiving Day, 1981. He was the first Cambodian bilingual teacher at South Boston High School and Khmer language proficiency, and the first bilingual bicultural community manager at Solomon Mental Health Center, DMH, DMR, in 1988. The City of Lowell is blessed to have Kovet Grant as a resident. When a three-alarm blaze in July of 2014 claimed seven lives and displaced 50 others, Kovet led fundraising efforts and connected with temples to organize traditional and cultural services. He interpreted for guests and mourners who came to pay their respects during candlelight procession. In 2017, after almost 40 years dedicated to public service, Kovet retired from the position of Services Coordinator for the Department of Developmental Services. Continuing his contributions to our city, we still find Kovet in the community, continuing to provide Khmer interpretation and seeking support for families who have lost loved ones and need help with funeral arrangements. He was specially active during the pandemic. The temples and the funeral homes in Lowell know Kovet well, and how he helps the Cambodian community. Each year Kovet visits his home country of Cambodia, where he volunteers and raises funds to support poor and disconnected people living with HIV/AIDS in rural areas. The Cambodian community is grateful and honored to Mr. Kovet Grant. Now therefore, I Mayor Sakari Chow, on behalf of the entire City Council, hereby offer our gratitude and best wishes to Kovet Grant for your selfless community service. Given this 23rd day of August 2022, signed by myself, Councilor Nuan, and the entire Council body. Congratulations. Before I give you the floor, Mr. Kovet, Councilor Nuan, would you like to say something?
You said it all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Kovet, would you like to say a few words?
I, I'm kind of surprised, because I thought just like after my retirement, I still have people still acknowledge my involvement in the community, and I also very honored to be recognized by the City Councilor, as well as the Mayor of Lowell, Mayor Sakari Chow, and also my colleague, my peer over here to come to support and my wife as well. I believe that the Lowell have a lot of potential in term of developing some kind of economic being, and also to support the community of all races. And I very glad that I can be part of the team, and also the local nonprofit organization that continues to involve in helping the people with the food, with the arrangement for vaccination clinics, and to make everyone live in the good health and be safe in this community. I again just like want to thank you, all the support from the City Council about your vision to look into the Cambodian town as a whole, and to develop some kind of a, I'm not really sure about the infrastructure, but to develop some planning to revitalize and to make the community prosper in the future. And I'm really, really honored to be part of the team, and thank you very much.
Not too many people know, but Mr. Kovet is also an avid and skilled tennis player. I would like to present a citation to you, if you could come in, and we'll take a photo with you. For both citations, the motion to accept and place on file by Councilor Rourke, second by Councilor Robinson, the motion is passed. We now go to three, City Clerk, 3.1, Minutes of Cannabis Control Subcommittee, August 9th, City Council Regular Meeting, August 9th, for acceptance. Motion to accept and place on file by Councilor Nuan, second by Councilor Mosia, on favor of the I post, say no, the I have it, motion is carry. We now go to four, the General Public Hearing, 4.1, Ordinance Create Low Youth Commission. This section is open to all those in favor. Open to all those in favor, hearing none. That portion is closed. We're now open to all those who oppose. Open to all those who oppose, hearing none. That portion is now closed. Any comments by any of the Councilors? Councilor Robinson?
I would just like to say thank you. Think this is long overdue. I believe, Councilor Yim, this was discussed at the first youth subcommittee that I called, and this is something that I think is great for the community. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Need a motion to adopt by Councilor Robinson, second by Councilor Janess. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilor Nuan?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Rourke?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Councilor Yim?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councilor Gitchia?
Yes.
Councilor Janess?
Yes.
Councilor Leahy?
Yes.
Councilor Mercia?
Yes.
Tenyes?
We now go to 4.2, Ordinance Create Position, Call Some Aging Bookkeeper. This portion is now open to all those in favor. Open to all those in favor. This portion is now closed. We're now open to all those who oppose. Open to all those who oppose. This portion is now closed. Any comments by any of the Councilors? Hearing none. Need a motion to adopt by Councilor Gitchia, second by Councilor Drinkwater. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Councilor Nuan?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Rourke?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Councilor Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councilor Gitchia?
Yes.
Councilor Janess?
Yes.
Councilor Leahy?
Yes.
Councilor Mercia?
Yes.
Tenyes?
We now go to Section 5, Utility Public Hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to bundle 5.1 to 5.4.
I was told that we cannot bundle public hearing, so we'll make this quick. 5.1, 5.2. I'll try to read faster if possible. 5.1, National Grid Request Installation of 65 Feet of Conduit and Sidewalk to Service 173 East Merrimack Street. This portion is now open to all those who in favor. Open also in favor. This portion is, do you have a speaker? Are you in favor?
Yes.
Just state your name and your address.
Vazna Aang, 1101 Turnpike Street, North End, over Mass, representing National Grid. So, the customer is looking to install about 65 feet of two 4-inch conduit from manhole 132 and a heavy-duty handhole on the sidewalk they're in need of at in order to be able to get service from National Grid.
Thank you. Any other comments and questions? Hearing none. This portion is now closed. Thank you for coming to speak. This portion is now open to all those who oppose. Open to all those opposed, hearing none. Need a motion to adopt?
Would you approve?
Councilor, was it Councilor?
You just referred to a wire inspector.
Okay, just need to refer to the one inspector by Councilor Robinson, second by Councilor Rourke, on favor of the I post, say no, the I have it, motion is carry. We now go to 5.2, National Grid Request Installation of 50 Feet of Concrete Duct to Service 10 Technology Drive. This portion is now open to all those who are in favor. Are you going to speak on this one as well?
Yes. Once again, a company on a technology drive and transfer, they're requiring some 4-5-inch concrete encased conduit from existing manhole 2-2 on Technology Drive, and that newly installed duct will need to go to manhole 2-3 in order to provide service to the company there, sir.
Thank you. Seeing the other one has to speak in favor, this portion is now closed. We're now open to all those who oppose. Open to all those who oppose. That portion is now closed. Any comment by the Councilors? Hearing none. Need a motion to refer to the one inspector by Councilor Yem, second by Councilor Scott, on favor of the I post, say no, the I have it, motion is carry. We now go to 5.3, National Grid Request Installation of Two Joe Poles on Vonnam Avenue across from Boulevard Street. This portion is now open to all those in favor. Are you here to speak on that as well?
Yes. We're looking to, actually, National Grid is looking to upgrade the substation on, I believe it's Boulevard Street. So, in order for us to do that, we would require to install three manholes, and I believe it's six, sorry about that, six, I think it's six 5-inch duct in order to upgrade the underground conduit, I mean conductor, in order to provide power to the public.
Thank you for being here to speak on those issues. Seeing the other speaker on in favor, the portion is now closed, now open to all those who oppose. Open to all those who oppose. That portion is now closed. Any comments by the Councilors? Hearing none. Need a motion to refer to the one inspector by Councilor Janess, second by Councilor Gitchia, on favor of the I post, say no, the I have it, motion is carry. We now go to 5.4, Boston Gas, DBA, National Grid Request Installation of Gas Maines on 10th Grandview and Mount Pleasant Street. This portion is now open to all those in favor. Open to all those in favor, hearing none. The portion, just please state your name and your address, please.
Hi, Diana Cuddy, National Grid, 40 Sylvan Road, Waltham, Mass. I'm in favor of this proposed project.
Thank you. Are there any other speaker in favor? Hearing none. That portion is now closed, now open to all those who oppose. Open to all those who oppose, hearing none. The portion is now closed. Any comments by the Councilors? Councilor Gitchia?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the representative from National Grid. Could you tell us the policy on repairing damage while putting in all of these gas lines from, in residents' property as they're doing these gas lines?
Yes, so National Grid, in addition to repairing the street to the existing condition that it was before, they do repair the property, and if they need to move a meter and create, bring the meter outside, they will offer the homeowner a stipend to purchase a bush or something to hide that.
So, on Lincoln Parkway, we replaced the gas main down there, we hit people's irrigation, and sitting before us tonight, a damages that these residents are looking for from a private contractor that was contracted through National Grid. I don't understand why we have to waste city resources when this is a National Grid issue, and these residents' irrigation should have been repaired in a timely manner. Could you please provide why they're not being repaired in a timely manner, and if you will go to these residents and make sure that they're reimbursed for the cost so that they could keep their property to the way that they like it?
Yes, so typically with irrigation, it's difficult to maneuver the gas line around it because that's higher up above ours, so we do often have to go through that. If there have been any irrigation systems that are damaged, if you want to send, send me the name of the homeowner or the property owner, I can forward that through as a claim, and they can, they can get it fixed, and then we'll reimburse them for the cost.
Okay, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the City Manager. Manager Golden, could you forward over 77 Lincoln Parkway that's in our packet tonight? I don't think the Law Department should spend one waking minute on any of this paperwork that keeps coming to us when it's damaged by them, and before it comes to us, we probably should send it to them so it doesn't even reach our desk, because that's one of them, and the other one is 106 Lincoln Parkway. They're both in our packets tonight, and I won't vote for National Grid again if we keep getting these things, because I think it's irresponsible that it has to get sent to our level when this is their project, and it can simply be done by field staff and shouldn't be at this level. If you could please send that over to them and make sure that these two residents have reimbursed their funding as soon as possible. One of them is an elderly person.
Yeah, I just wanted to say one more thing. So, when they do these gas main replacement projects, they put a flyer, they notify the abutters and put a flyer on their, on their door, and they, the number on there and the supervisor's name is on there, and if they have any damages, they can contact either the supervisor or the phone number on there, and, you know, National Grid will reimburse for any damage that we've done, and if it's the contractor that did the damage, and it was avoidable, then we would, we in turn go for the, go after the contractor to reimburse National Grid.
I did speak to both of the residents, and both reached out to National Grid with no response, so that's why I'm speaking on these two, and I'm sure other city councilors have the same issue in their areas, and we shouldn't have to be a customer service representative for National Grid in between. So, I just think that there's a breakdown somewhere in that letter that's being provided, in the service that's being provided to the residents, and hopefully we can correct that going forward. Thank you.
Yes, I'm happy to call them and find out where the disconnect was and work on fixing that so that it doesn't happen in the future.
Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was actually going to speak later on about a petition to do some of the streets around South Lowell, but I might as well tie it in right now because it's the same discussion. You mentioned that they were supposed to return the streets to the same condition prior, but the streets all over, the side streets off of Woobin Street, just have large lumps going down the center of them, and I've had a lot of residents reach out that aren't happy with the paving job that's been done. So, I don't know whether or not that's a city engineer that signs off or how that works, but if we could look into that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilor Mosia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilor Gitchia, and if that is in the form of a motion, I'll second it because I believe the, they are responsible, and I don't know why it came before the city for property damage when this is a utility company that did that, and so I second your motion.
Councilor Gitchia, you will make that in the form of a motion or just a request to the City Manager to follow up?
I'm sure the manager's office will get back to us, and we can save time in between. I just hope that they can get reimbursed as soon as possible, because this is an elderly resident who takes care of their property extremely well.
Any other comments? Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question about the actual issue before us here tonight, not to take anything away from the important discussion that we just had, but I'm just wondering if these gas mains are replacements of existing service or installation of new service in this neighborhood?
So, based on the plans that I have, this is a main replacement project, so it's replacing existing
Just a question about the actual issue before us here tonight, not to take anything away from the important discussion that we just had. But I'm just wondering if these gas mains are replacements of existing service or installation of new service in this neighborhood?
So based on the plans that I have, this is a main replacement project, so it's replacing existing mains either for integrity or for reliability. I don't think there are any new services being added at this time. They're just replacing older pipe that's about 50 years old, most of it looks like.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Here none, need a motion to refer to the one inspector by Counsel Mosia, second by Counsel Robinson. The motion is passed. Before we go to the communications from city manager, the motion response section, we do have a not-so-long agenda, but I know there's an item that we have some speakers in presentation on. I need a motion to suspend the rule and take up 6.1 out of order. There was discussed about the DEI by Counsel Robinson, second by Counsel Yam. 6.1.1 is the informational report on the DEI education and training partnership with Middlesex Community College. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. I'd like to, at this time, introduce the team from Middlesex Community College to discuss what we've been talking about back and forth in regards to the training of DEI employees. So if the folks could come up to the podium, President Sisson and your team, if you want to introduce them, just to kind of talk about what we've been going back and forth with in regards to teaching and training the folks here in the city of Lowell. And I know that Mr. Cook will be handing out a few pamphlets as well. Thank you.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to be brief and try and answer as many questions you may have based on the materials that we are handing out that we've provided to you before. I want to make sure that I can introduce the members of MCC. I'm very proud to have a tremendous team working with me every day at the college. They're here to support this work and to answer any questions that you may have. First, I want to introduce Dr. Arlene Rodriguez, who is the Provost and Vice President for Academic and Student Affairs at the college. I also want to introduce Patrick Cook, who is my Vice President of Administration. Third, I'd like to introduce Dr. Dorsey Ariana, who is also our Executive Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And fourth, I want to introduce Judy Burke, who is the Executive Director of Institutional Advancement, but also oversees all of our corporate and workforce training at the college. It's an honor to be here with you this evening. We have a slide presentation. I don't know exactly whether you have access to that, but I would want to say that I was honored to be asked to come and speak to you about work that's really incredibly important to the college. But more importantly, I was honored to receive a call from the city manager about what I think is a major priority for him and for the city. And that is the opportunity to really begin the process for the DEI initiatives here in the city. What I would let you know is that the overview I want to provide for you tonight is about that partnership with the city of Lowell, which I believe will be a multi-year partnership. We come to this work because we have established a center at the college. The American Association of Colleges and Universities selected us as one of 55 institutions across the country to host a Center for Truth, Racial Healing, and Transformation. And that's based on all the work that we have done over the past decade, but more importantly, accelerated that work over the last couple of years amongst our entire faculty, staff, and really focused on closing our opportunity gaps for all of our students who enter the institution. I want to tell you a little bit about the fact that this work, this training, is not unusual for the community college to engage in. It's in fact, we've got a four-year history in corporate and community education and workforce training across the Commonwealth. And more importantly, it's really to focus on the conversation that I had with the city manager and his team about a diversity, equity, and inclusion training that will be not only non-credit, but also credit-bearing as a series of workshops that will eventually be credit-worthy and also the opportunity to go beyond that first certificate that we will provide, but to do additional work over the next couple of years. The work that we do at the institution is really about preparing the next generation of leaders to break down systemic racism and to dismantle the disbelief, the belief in the hierarchy of human values. That's really what the truth, racial healing, and transformation work is all about. We have redesigned our mission statement at the college. Middlesex is focused on equity to transform lives and shape futures. And in that, we've had a series of long conversations, critical conversations at the institution about the work that needs to be done to be able to transform the institution. We also have just embarked on the final copy and approval from the Board of Higher Education for our 2022 to 2027 strategic plan with equity at its core. We've been engaging with a national organization called Achieving the Dream, which really looks at all of our data to make sure that we can best serve every student for their successful completion. And we have a team of faculty that's involved in the Scholarship of Teaching and Learning, which is an ongoing professional development effort across the college to make sure that all of our faculty are not only empathic to all of our students, but also provide the curriculum for a 21st century education at the community college. What I would also mention to you is the fact that that strategic plan that we have done has two specific goals in it, about leading together for racial equity and justice. It's about actively engaging the entire college community in dialogues around racial equity and diversity to increase fluency, both internally and externally. And also to partner with regional organizations to offer and create credentials, much like the one we're talking about tonight, to meet the needs of all learners across the Commonwealth and align with any workforce needs. A lot of you may be aware that throughout the city, we've been offering an opportunity for what we call racial healing circles that are part of the Truth, Racial Healing, and Transformation Center. A racial healing circle is really to affirm the humanity in all of us. It's an opportunity to have deep conversations about who we are, our lived experience, and how we bring that to the work that we do every day. It's a circle that contains people in a conversation to create an ongoing healing process and relationship building, which is the foundation for all of this work. The college has sponsored a number of events, not only at the institution, but is welcome to all of our community members and our community partners. Most recently, we've done this kind of work, racial healing circles out in the Boys and Girls Club, at the CBA. We've done them in English, we've done them in Spanish. And it continues to be our work that the racial healing circle is not an attempt to fix or cure anyone, but to provide an open dialogue and a deep conversation about diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice. I also will mention, as I've said to you, that Middlesex is not new to doing training. Certainly, we've got 40 years of on-employer site on campus and remote corporate education and workforce training to really meet the needs of the community, the employer, and the individual professional. We've educated and trained thousands of employees and hundreds of businesses and industries and municipalities throughout the Middlesex County, including the city of Lowell in the past. What we hope to start is our first cohort that will begin in September. Our DEI training will really consist of eight foundational workshops that are broken into two-hour sessions with reflection in between. We will be focusing on topics such as identity, community building, implicit bias, diversity, equity, and inclusion, race and ethnicity, a brief history of racialized oppression, racialized barriers in public service, and more importantly, an action planning session about putting what everyone learns into practice. Basically, the foundation of what we've been doing with all of our departments in our areas at the college. This is approximately a 16-hour commitment on the part of the individuals that will participate, although there will be time in between for readings and reflection, as I've noticed. These folks will be students at the institution in the certificate that will receive one credit for the time that they provide. And in that, there will be a learning management shell on our learning management system. There will be a blackboard shell that will identify all of the readings, all of the topics, all of the conversations and the prompts for the work that will be done outside of the sessions that happen over the course of those eight weeks. When we talk about this work, we talk about the opportunity to really address all of the managers that work within the city and do that in two cohorts. Two cohorts of 15 that allow for maximum conversation and integration of the themes that we provide. And we will do that over the course of the fall and the spring. The first cohort will begin on September 12th. Of course, we'll meet every Monday. The idea is to have people come in, enjoy some conversation to get ready for the session, have some coffee, get warmed up for a two-hour session with each of the facilitators. And we hope that this will build the kind of community and conversation about each of the individual responsibilities that those managers have within the city and an opportunity to really share strategies across the city to be able to really develop a DEI lens in all of the work that is done. What I would also mention to you is that we have committed to do additional, at the city manager's request, additional DEI concepts presentations to a number of presentations, number of departments in different times and locations on demand. So the city manager will identify and those managers that are going through that training will identify when they want us to meet with their larger groups. And in a seminar setting, we will preside and present DEI concepts at their basic form so that the language that their managers are using and all of us begin to use, the ideas and concepts behind implicit bias begin to be built into the daily language of the work that happens within the city. We have two incredibly experienced faculty to do this work, although I could tell you that we have a number of facilitators across the institution. DEI work at the college does not exist in one particular department. It is cross interdisciplinary. Jennifer Bauer, who's a Lowell native, has been involved with DEI work for over a decade and is certified in diversity, inclusion from Cornell University, which is one of the finest DEI presentations and certificates in the country. She's also worked at MCC for nine years, and prior to that, she worked at Lowell High School for 12 years. Aloisa Tucuna is born in Brazil and completed most of her higher education here in the city and training in Lowell at UMass Lowell. She's been teaching courses in the criminal and social justice field for approximately the last 12 years with a concentration on ethical standards and interpersonal communication skills. These two women together are forced to be reckoned with in the conversation gathering and facilitation that is so important in these sessions. What I would also say to you, it's most important, is that we want to invite you, and I think, to a special event, and that we will be bringing in the woman who really designed the racial healing circles as an opportunity for conversation, Dr. Gail C. Christopher. She's an award-winning change agent and an Executive Director of the National Collaborative for Health Equity. That will be happening on August 31st from noon to 1:00. We open that up to an entire community. And this does just give you an example of the sharing of ongoing professional development that will happen, that has happened at the college, that now will be part of the sharing that we will do with these cohorts for this training. Our hope is that after we do what we would consider DEI 101, that next year, the city will bring us back after an assessment to do DEI 102 with Osay's managers, another 18, 15 to 18 hours of additional training to dig deeper into sort of the language, implicit bias, and the work that needs to be done to be able to continue the work that needs to happen within the city. And then after that, in year three, that we would do the same for a DEI 103. Those one-credit components are part of the facilitated curriculum that exists at the institution that our students have access to and that essentially all of our faculty and staff have been engaged in. So that gives you an overview, and I'm happy to take any of your questions. And I guess my team is here to actually answer any of your questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Sisson. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I appreciate all of your help and your guidance on this. And I first and foremost want to thank the city council. Some of you I've spoken to about how to attack this in a different way, how to look at this where we can have all of our department heads learn. I would like to say simultaneously, but within two cohorts, which before May of next year, all of our department heads and the leadership teams will be educated in what we like to call the 101s of DEI, which is extremely important. And as President Sisson had stated, right around, you know, workshop four or five, and we're going to kind of keep this loose to figure out how best to go at this situation, is we're going to be heading into, you know, DPW, DPD, name the department, where the professionals over at Middlesex Community College will have the ability to speak with the employees, to let them know exactly what is being said, how it's being said, and really to further educate ourselves, everybody, to continue to learn. I think that under the council's charge is to work locally, try to speak to somebody who, quite frankly, is right down the street from us. And I'm hoping in our future, we're going to see more education, not just from DEI, but leadership education, education on management style, education on giving the employees in the city of Lowell that opportunity to continue to strive. This is something that is not exactly new, but we're trying to revamp this. I can't say thank you to the city council enough. Each and every one of you have called me on different occasions to try to think outside the box, see how to get this done. And I think that this is going to be a good opportunity for us, for the entire city to get to a baseline where we can then move forward to find out what tomorrow shall bring. So thank you very much, the council, for allowing me to kind of look outward and try to find out, you know, who we could talk to. And President Sisson has been absolutely incredible to be working with. And I do love the fact that, obviously, we're right down the street, and working with one of our local partners, I think, is a great idea. But of course, with the continued learning that I think is so readily, that should be so readily available for all the employees here so they can continue to thrive throughout the city is something I think we're all looking forward to. So, Mr. Sisson, I'd like to just ask you, through the mayor, of course, if there's any councilors that have any questions or concerns, they can direct them to me or even President Sisson, who is extremely well-versed in this. So I thank you, sir, very much for your time.
Absolutely.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sisson. Thank you to the administration. I think this is great. I think when we had the discussion and the four key areas that we wanted to make commitment and investment to get this ball moving, and this is the first step in that process. It's commitment and dedication to basically education. And it starts with educating rights, wrongs, what we do, where we are, where we need to go. So I'd just like to say thank you for the partnership.
Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thank you to President Sisson for the presentation. I thought it was very informative. I had a few questions in my mind coming into this, and you were able to answer some of them, stating that this is, you know, the first step, I think was an important note. Obviously, we have a lot of work to do in this area, as we've talked about many, many times. One concern I have is just with the continuity. I like the idea of managers returning for further education in subsequent years. However, I am concerned that we've had a lot of turnover at our managerial levels, and that's not a new phenomenon. And I don't expect that it will be ending anytime soon if we're being honest with ourselves. So I just want to make sure that we build some kind of structure in here so that either the new managers who come on to replace these folks are able to step in. Basically, if we can make this something that's organic and continues to grow, and there's always resources, you know, someone doesn't join off-cycle and then doesn't learn anything for two years, I don't think that's a scenario that any of us want to see. So that's kind of my first question, is how we can handle that.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Directly in my office, as I believe the city council has wanted, Inabel Dominguez is going to be, she's going to be charged with making sure, and I hate to say just checking it, but to make sure that even the councilors, the councilors are going to be invited to this as well, but to ensure that everybody on the leadership team has checked that 101 box and then the, you know, 201, 301, and so on and so forth. This is going to be run, which I believe is important to the council. This is going to be run right out of the manager's office. And to your point, we had a brief conversation, President and I, if, you know, somebody new comes along, and let's say in June of next year, we're going to have to figure out how to get to that 101 back. But it's definitely going to be a partnership that is a continuation. And the city of Lowell has been here for an awful long time. We're going to be here for an awful long time more, as well as Middlesex Community College. And the partnership is something that I'm very excited about. And Phil and I, President and I have talked about it, well, I've probably talked to you too much about it, Mr. President. But the checking, to ensure that folks have this, the fact that Middlesex Community College is going to even offer a credit, you know, a college credit towards some of the employees, I think that's fabulous, to be honest with you. So that's one of the questions. Hopefully, Counsel, that answers what you were asking.
That does address it. So thank you, and I appreciate that that was something that was already front of mind and you guys were looking at and planning for. The other question I have is just simply a logistical question. For these cohorts, is this learning going to be occurring during typical business hours or is this going to be an after-hours commitment for employees? Just curious how that's going to be handled. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. That will be happening during the day. We have looked at this. We think it's appropriate that the lunchtime hour, we're going to ask the folks on the team to start signing up for this, the first 15 and the second 15, so on and so forth. We'll, you know, provide a little bit of bite to eat over the couple of hours and a cup of coffee or so. But just an opportunity for a little bit of team building, but as well as, you know, really diving into this DEI piece where people are really taking ownership of it and understanding, you know, implicit bias, diversity, equity... bias, diversity, equity, history. So it's something that the team and I felt as though this should be done during the working hours. And just before anyone's wondering, we wouldn't have, for instance, a commissioner and assistant commissioner together. We'll be dividing everybody up, so if there is an issue, there's not a problem within one of the departments.
Excellent. I think that makes a lot of sense, and I appreciate that as well. I'm looking forward to seeing how this goes and hearing feedback, both from the employees who attend, as well as everyone involved in the program, to see how this works and what other improvements we can make going forward. And I look forward to hearing more about this process as we move on. Thank you.
Councilor Kishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Anytime you get to send an employee off-site for training is a bonus. We look at that in procurement. The first thing they teach you is have an outside source teach you about something so that you don't end up institutionalized with the setting. So I think that this is an extreme positive when you start looking at outside. Also, one of the other things that come to mind is that when you do hire a DEI officer, you'll have training background for the employees already, so they won't be overwhelmed with trying to train over 400 employees. So I think that's a major piece. And as I look through Middlesex's course offerings, you see that it's offered in here long before the city had it, so I think that that's another plus. And through you to President Sisson, would the same Professor Kangas be the one teaching the course?
No, actually, our identification of our full-time faculty is a commitment of the college to do that first. What you're reading there is our corporate and community ad that sometimes uses our full-time faculty, but also uses adjuncts and people from the community who are very versed in expertise in an area. The possibility of using a number of other faculty at the college, both full-time and part-time, are always part of what we may need to do as this program grows. But the intention is not to use that particular individual, but our full-time faculty who have been working with our own organizational challenges right within Middlesex.
So the full-time faculty, how long have they been teaching this course? The one that's going to come to the city, or whichever one's going to be used? How long have they been teaching the diversity, equity, and inclusion course to members of the community or any student who wants it? How long have they been doing that?
So they've been doing these workshops as part of the work that we've been doing with Racial Equity and Justice Institute, with Bridgewater State, and we've been doing that for the last, as I said, number of years, but more intensely in the last couple of years across the institution. So those folks have expertise in delivering each of those workshops, and their team taught for a very specific reason, because you want both expertise in facilitation and also in subject matter.
I'm going to ask you something that's an opinion, but I would think that the city of Lowell, by hiring a person, just any person off the street at the amount that we pay, we're not going to get somebody probably as educated as the person who's going to do the training in the training background that your community college does. So I think this is a plus for all the employees, and I think it's a plus for the management team that we send people out and we don't hold them within the setting and be taught in here by one person. And that's taught in procurement about when you start looking at spending and having other eyes on it, because once you're institutionalized, there's no changing a person. And I think this has a lot of value because it's an outside setting source, so I think it has value, and I can't wait to see how it turns out, like Councilor Janess said. And I think that as we go forward, it'll make the job easier for whoever the person is that comes in for the DEI officer, because there will be a background, and there'll also be some information that they'll be provided with, that they'll understand that this is the level that they were actually taught at. So I thank you for even opening up the community college for this, and I think that, through you to the manager, I think that this is a great first step in trying to change your culture.
Councilor Robinson? Are you done? Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, Councilor, to get your mention, the DEI officer, which is our, obviously, role that is currently not filled within the city. Just checking my memory here, I think that is with the Personnel Subcommittee still to decide where that's going. If so, I would ask my friends on the Personnel Subcommittee to please move that forward, simply because I think it would be important to have whoever fills that role be able to be part of one of these cohorts. And I think if we can make that happen, that'd be great. If it's going to take some more time, then that's something else, but I just think it would be a missed opportunity, is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilor Musia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. President, staff, thank you very much, because the city put out a concern, a request, and MCC answered the call. So I want to turn around and give you a round of applause for your cooperation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor.
No other comments. I would like to thank you, Mr. Sisson, and the MCC team and family for coming tonight and made the presentation.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to the workshop. Thank you. The second part of the item that's being moved out of order on a 6.1.1, the second part informational is the Lowell High School project update from project team. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the Council. Mr. Dowd, you're going to be leading us here? As the councilors know, Mr. Dowd is from Skanska, and he'll be, on Thursday last week, we had an SBC meeting, and he's here just to discuss what had happened at that time and answer any questions that anybody may have, but most of the councilors were there listening, and so, Mr. Dowd?
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, through you to the Council. We have a brief presentation this evening, and I will turn it over to Mr. Rex Radloff from Suffolk Construction.
My name is Rex Radloff with Suffolk Construction. I'm excited to give this presentation on the Lowell High School project. This is a presentation on Suffolk's behalf, as well as Skanska's and Perkins Eastman. So I'll pass the mic around as we get to each other's part. However, first off, Lowell High School, multiple phases. We're working through the first phase right now. We're eager to turn it over to the faculty, teachers, and students in the coming week. We're also moving into Phase Two. I'll touch on that briefly throughout the slides. We're also working through what we're calling a summer work, or phasing-enabling work. This is a handful of jobs, up to about 15 projects, within the existing buildings themselves, where we're able to set up spaces for students, faculty, and teachers coming back after the year, after the summer next week, actually. So with that said, I'm going to jump right into Phase One and give an update on remaining work, and then also provide for a virtual tour. I have some photos for everyone to check out. So for Phase One, Phase One is the construction of the new gym, as everyone's very aware of. And for the remainder of August, or at least for this next week, leading into students and teachers returning on the 29th, we're wrapping up the exterior of the project itself. So the inside of the project is effectively complete. We're working through what's considered punch list. I have that term here in quotes. It is a set of activities where we're cleaning up any minor deficiencies based on just construction activities. If we nick a wall, or we need to touch up something with paint, that's what we're working through right now. Very, very minor work. On the outside of the building itself, we're working through finishing the metal panels, also the edge metal itself. The metal panels is by a subcontractor, Jackson Glass, and then the edge metal is by another subcontractor, Greenwood. That's our roofer, that second one. Both those trades will be done by the end of this week. We're also working through exterior joint sealants, and then final cleaning of the outside of the building itself. Some other items that we're working through, finish hardscape, that's all things sidewalks, landscape elements, and then landscaping itself. We're addressing the planting beds right now, and then we're looking to do the actual planters actually next month when we hit our planting season. Right now, wouldn't it be appropriate to, very common to come in either in a spring timeframe or fall timeframe to do our plantings? So moving into September, this is after teachers are back, as well as students, we will commence our bleacher installation. So our bleachers are scheduled to be delivered on the 29th. We're working very closely with the athletic director to coordinate our bleachers into the building and get those installed without impacting any ongoing activities. And we're also looking to have the bleachers installed before the first home game. I believe it's with Chelmsford volleyball home game. We're also going to be final paving. That will be happening on September 9th. No worries at all. No worries at all. September 9th, the idea here is to get all the lifts out of the way and do one nice final pave with no equipment on. And then we'll continue on with our remaining punch list within the building, but this will be off-hours. So as far as what the building looks like inside, I have a virtual tour. These are some updated photos. I actually took these today. So the handouts, everyone may have, may have some photos in there from last week when I took them. So I'm sharing some fresh ones, actually, from a couple hours ago. What I have here is some of the final striping or painting of the basketball court. Oh, excuse me. Final painting of the basketball court. You saw Lowell on one end, also the emblem right in the center of the court. Now, the painting will be coming to an end on Thursday, and then we'll start to do our finished coats. We have three coats we're putting down, and our final coat will be put on over the weekend. Wall pads with the emblem, as well as banners that have been hung, and then some architectural elements sharing here, just what the cal wall looks like with the structure on the outside and the decking over above, overhead. I'm also sharing a photo of the main corridor, walking into the space. Want to share some of the locker rooms, and then as well as, or not the locker rooms, the lockers in the main corridor, as well as the display case on the left-hand side. We have a couple of those. Within this area on the left-hand side, it's the athletic director's office, as well as the training room, strength and fitness. Few more photos on the outside of the building. This is the cal wall, which everyone's, I'm sure, very familiar with, as well as the brick facade, how everything ties together. Typical locker rooms. Our chiller room. Landscape elements. This is, our landscaper, again, is a manual. They mobilized on site last week and been able to get in the granite pavers. That's what everyone sees the diagonal of. These are flush with the concrete, and then also install the cobblestones themselves. We'll actually have some bike racks within the photo that I show here. Those will go in the next couple of days. Afterwards, they'll pack everything in with very fine sand, if you will. And then also, lastly, planter beds that you see up here, that we'll continue on with a manual around the side of the building. The front entrance itself, this is about 95% complete. We have Greenwood completing the edge metal. That's this black piece up at top, and then that entrance will be complete. We'll also bring the gate over to establish our final line of limits of construction, actually for Phase Two, with respect to Phase One. A couple of the photos, main entrance, strength and fitness, and also the kitchen I'm sharing. So with that said, that's Phase One. Just to conclude, it's effectively, the inside's complete. The outside, we're pushing for this next week to have dressed up, cleaned out, final paving on 9/2, and we're excited to have the teachers and students come back next week, starting on the 29th with the teachers, and the 31st with the students. As far as the certificate of occupancy, we have set up with the building inspector, Mr. Fuller, on this Thursday for his final walk and to seek that final piece of paper. So with that said, moving on into Phase Two, this is the build-out of the new freshman academy, as well as the cafeteria and other office and classroom spaces. Now, the major milestones for Phase Two are very similar to what we were tracking for Phase One, except a year and a half later. It is starting off with abatement of the 1980s building. This is about 95% complete. All of the existing fieldhouse has been abated, and about three-quarters of the 1980s building has been abated. We're continuing on with the roof. That should be complete throughout the week, and then we'll be complete with our abatement activities, at least within the inside of the building. We technically are abating on the outside of the building, but we do it through a different manner through a non-traditional work plan. So as everyone can see, the building is starting to come down. The structure itself still remains, but everyone will start to see the structure come down within the coming week, starting with the fieldhouse and then very particular elements within it. And then afterwards, we'll complete, or at least for August, we'll also complete our phasing-enabling work. That's within the buildings, those swing spaces, actually, which Perkins Eastman will hit on in a little more detail on what those will look like. As far as September goes, we'll continue on with our bulk demolition, and then mobilize our site work contractor. This is Jay Duranzo. They'll come on site, and they'll immediately start to strip and grade the site. That's to level everything out, and then prepare for ground improvements. We're installing rammed aggregate piers, same exact foundation that we have for Phase One. And then as far as a virtual tour for Phase Two, this is effectively what it looks like. It's taken down the building. It's exciting stuff, memorable stuff for, I'm sure, many folks in the room, but this will be taking place throughout next month. And with that said, I'd like to share a couple logistics plans that we've been working, be it with the city, with the school, with Skanska, with Perkins Eastman, throughout this last summer, and what we're utilizing moving forward. So the first one is a campus map. I won't dive into this too much, because, again, Perkins Eastman's going to touch on the specifics, but this is indicating, I don't show all of the projects, but about 15 projects that we're working on within the buildings for this last summer. It's a tremendous amount of area to cover and a tremendous amount of work to put in place in a short period of time. And we've been able to share this with the school, so the faculty and the teachers and the students coming back, they understand where to go and what to expect. That is a new gym, while their older gym is no longer in service, and then a few other new spaces to, I guess, call home, be it a new office space or a new classroom. Another logistics plan, we shared more for early arrivals. This is our D-house egress plan. This is where it became a little more strategic between us and the school. We had to maintain construction activities within the building while also bringing in faculty into the space. And lastly is our traffic management plan. This is a plan that we're beginning to put in place as we speak. I'm sure everyone here has started to see Jersey berries out on the roadway. That will continue on. We'll also provide signage. A new crosswalk will cover up an older clock crosswalk and continue to put this plan into place. This plan will allow us to safely commence construction activities while the school's in session. With that said, a couple other items to touch on as far as the Lowell High School project update goes. MBE, WBE. This is a slide I've shared in the past, and I'll continue to do so. As far as our workforce participation goes, or at least our MBE and WBE contracts awarded, it's at $21 million. This will remain the same throughout the life of the project now, now that we've bought everyone out or hired all of our subcontractors. Our total construction minority workforce is at 21%. So this is 210 workers, or 29,000 hours. Our total femal workforce is at 3%, 32 workers, 4,000 hours, and then our total Lowell residents, 9.4% and 50 workers, 12,000 hours. And with that said, I'd like to turn it over to Perkins Eastman for a designer update.
My name is Joe Drowne. I'm from Perkins Eastman Architects, and just want to give you an update on some of the designer issues during construction. You may remember that we had temporary locations, or relocations of many of the spaces to be able to accomplish the work that's being done, particularly taking the 1980s portion of the building down. And there are a number of areas in the building that are getting looked at. So, for example, the location of the media center is in the first floor of the gym. It's the future wrestling room, as well as there's a new area where it is currently called the Little Theater. the Little Theater. There are a number of spaces that are being temporarily relocated in there. So there's a, there's a new flooring system that's going in. So it's all one level. You know now, if you've been in there, it's steps. So that's teachers dining, business classroom, as well as the student store. And we have relocation of the admin suite, which is up in the northeast corner of the 1922 building. That is being relocated due to the work that's being done in the 1980s building as well. And we have other admin suites for the different houses. This is the location in more detail of the temporary media center, and you can see it's fit out currently in the wrestling suite. And this is the, what was the Little Theater. So we had the business classroom, the school store and teacher dining. And this is the new entrance to the school. So in 1922 building, there's the entrance to the auditorium, Irish auditorium, and this is the reception desk. You may remember it was, it was in the entrance, the existing entrance that's now being removed. So we had to relocate that for oversight of entry and people coming in to the school on a daily basis. And this is the main office suite. So the admin suite has been relocated to the northeast corner of the 1922 building, and you can see it's being fitted out with furnishings now. And these are the houses, C and D houses are being configured and fitted out with furnishings. The other thing that's happening right now as we wrap up the construction is what we call FFNE, furniture fixtures and equipment. So you'll see in a number of the rooms are there, the furnishings are coming in, the athletic equipment, as you can see, is being installed as well. And we've also are installing wayfinding. There's a lot of work done to make sure that people understood where the new entrance was. So there was, it was clearly identified on 1922 and exterior signage as well as interior signage. So we worked with the staff to identify where the flows were happening. We did a temporary shutdown of the south bridge to try to better understand how students were going to move through the building during that period and identified where signage was necessary, in addition to the obvious signs that you would normally put in to identify locations of different rooms. And now Jim Dowd's going to be speaking to us about budget.
Good evening. So our overall project budget is $381.9 million. We have established the GMP contract price with Suffolk now that everything is bought out at $305 million. The main number we're tracking right now is the $21.2 million in construction contingency. One thing I want to point out is everyone hears the term change order. When you hear change order, it gets charged to the $21.2 million. That does not mean that the $381.9 million budget is increasing. So the $381.9 million budget is where we are tracking and where we're watching the contingencies and those get charged to them. Our amount invoiced to date is $87 million. Our amount reimbursed from the MSBA to date is $48 million. I will point out that that tracks a few months behind. The construction contingency, we have, we're going to have a pending change order in the amount of approximately $25,000 that would be charged to the $21.2. And we're currently vetting $705,000 in potential change orders. There's also the owner's contingency of $2 million, which $0 has been sent on that. And the construction manager's contingency, which has 91, that's 7.1 million with $91,000 spent to date on that and pending change requests of $172,000. Moving on, this is a summary of the overall monthly budget update. The full budget can be found in the monthly reports as well as the invoice packages that are sent out. And we have last July, processing the July invoices were $6.2 million with the overall amount invoiced to date at $87 million. We'll move on to the next steps. As my colleagues have stated, we're well into wrapping up phase one in the next week. Teachers will be returning to school on Monday, the 29th with students on the 31st. We've been working very closely with the school administration to make a smooth transition next week. Thank you.
No other presentation? Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And through you to the council. First and foremost, I want to thank the council for last Thursday with the in-depth questions that everybody had, the discussion we had, the SBC. And I just want to remind everyone that September 8th at 5:30, 5:30 PM will be doing the ribbon cutting. So once again, it's September 8th at 5:30 PM ribbon cutting. It should last about 45 minutes because I think we have a 6:30 volleyball practice.
We wedged it in between volleyball practices.
Correct, correct. So if anyone's thinking they're going to be there taking a few laps around the track, that probably will not happen. So, but once again, thank you to the council for last Thursday, and the council has thought this would be beneficial to, once again, for the team to come here and speak about the, what has been the updates on essentially the closeout of phase one. So, thank you. Any question? Oh, sorry.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have a few questions that were brought forward to me from residents. You mentioned the swing space, the Little Theater and the wrestling room. I know that you had mentioned during the tour that the wrestling room would become right now the media center, and then after that, I believe it was the TV studio after that. Is there a timeline for when it would be a wrestling studio? And the same for the Little Theater? Because I thought that was going to, if my memory's correct, going to be like teacher planning space, if I remember? So I'm just trying to see when the end use will actually happen with those spaces.
So the temporary use of the wrestling room, we have to finish, I believe it's phase two, which will then, at the end of phase two, those spaces will be moved into their final location and the wrestling room will become the wrestling room. And so that is 2024 spring. And so the, the other spaces that you were referring to that are taking place in the zone of the Little Theater would be the same timeframe because that's, we need to use those for temporary occupancies.
Okay, thank you. And the other question I had was over the exterior walkway connecting the 1980s building, the portion that's being torn down, connecting over to the new gymnasium. That's an ex, that's an outdoor walkway. There's no interior access. There won't be an interior hallway. And is that a secure walkway? Like it's gated off from the public? So some people ask me about safety and also walking outdoors. So, thank you.
The walkway will be the exterior walkway. However, it will be gated off, secure, and you'll have overhead protection with lights as well.
Thank you. And the last question that I was asked about was the percentage for the hires for females and minorities, that they weren't, we weren't hitting the target right now and what work was being done to make that happen?
Yeah. So the, just to bring up my slides. So the percentage for the, the percentage for the minority workforce is at 15.3% as a goal. We're tracking 21.8, so above there. For the femal workforce, our goal is 6.9. We're tracking at 3%. So we're below there. And then as far as the Lowell residents, we actually don't have a goal listed, but we're tracking at 9.4. So that's the overall snapshot. Right now, we're working with our DNI department to continue to put added emphasis on that 3.0% to have it come up. It has actually come up slightly in the last couple of months as we move into, towards the end of this phase. So the strategy right now is continue to look at it, or continue to track it with the trades and continue to try to find new opportunities to, to increase our female participation.
Thank you. And obviously, I'd like to see that number rise.
Of course. It is our goal to hit on, on all three of these in good standing.
Thank you.
Also, on the 1980s to the gym walkway, that is going to be manned by school security. So for people who are, students that are outside, which sometimes happens with the freshman academy and other areas, that they can walk that way also.
Oh, you mean around the building? Is that what you're saying? Well, is it, there only going to be one access to the night, to the new gymnasium? Will they be able to walk around to the other side?
One access from, from the back, and that will also be manned if anybody's moving outside the school, which they sometimes do.
Thank you.
Counselor Kishia?
Through you, Mayor, shout to the contractor. In the 1922 building, when they pulled up the floor, there was water underneath it. Could you update us on that and what the issues are over there?
Yeah. So when we, so the 1922 building, there is a project that started last year and continued on this year and will continue for the next couple of years where we have to install the supports or the supporting structure for a mechanical penthouse on the top of the roof of the 1920s building. To be able to do that, we have to start with the foundations. And we've been able to cut open the slab, dig down, and we encountered a water table higher than our borings indicated. We've since done some research. We have suspicion that it is tied to sequencing the work while the canal is drained to lower that water table. We don't quite know that yet. We're working closely with the geotechnical engineer on that. However, if that proves to be the case, we'll be able to do that work while coordinating with the drainage of the canal. That happens on a yearly basis or happens regularly throughout the year, rather. So not really, not overly concerned with being able to do that. If the water table does not decrease, we'll be able to seek other, other, other methods to get in a foundation that is adequate, be it maybe mini piles, but I don't want to go off and elaborate on what it could be. Don't, do not know yet.
So the elevations of the canal at their highest point, would that breach the floor in the 19?
No, don't believe so. And again, I would have to defer to the geotechnical engineer on this one. However, when we were digging down, the canal was at its height, as highest point, rather. And yeah, I'll leave it at that.
So, so the issue comes down to, we've had major issues in flooding in the basement of that property. And every time it rains or we have a high water table, not water table, but the canal rises, it goes right in, which isn't tied into the water table. Will we be draining that canal to see? I think you alluded to that. You'll drain the canal to see if that water actually drains out. And if it does, hopefully, we can find a solution through a geotech to seal that because when it rains over there, we get flooding issues and we've had them for a long time. And it seems like it may point to something similar to that. And I don't want to, like you said, I don't want to guesstimate, but when you listen to the whole process, and I'm just wondering what the hydraulic level of the water is at the same time as the canal and will it, you know, will it fluctuate with it? Because that's an important piece when we start looking at this project. The last thing we want to see is something like that. So whatever the fix is, it's going to have to be the fix because, you know, it's pretty bad when that thing comes over. And I would defer to the manager who hasn't seen it yet, but you know, we've been down there, down that road many times.
If I could add to this though, this is what our suspicion is. We under no means know what is the cause right now. So we're continuing to do our research to understand.
One thing about the downtown is that in the old days, they used to run, there is actually walkways underneath the downtown from one store across the street and over, and they're not full of water. So, and I don't know of any properties down there that actually have sub pumps in the basements. We have elevators that run in some of the larger buildings that actually go down there. So there's elevator shafts in there. So that's why the questions just come up and saying, okay, if this fills up, I would rather see someone be ahead of the curve than behind. And I do, it sounds like you guys are on it. And that's the reason why we brought it up is just because I think that as we go along, it will make the process easier if we understand that hydraulic rate over there. Thank you.
Just a quick questions regarding the demolition of the existing, existing gym. I noticed that the price of the steel went up 13, more than 13%. Is that a way, does those steel that can be recycling or reused?
Because of the type of contract that we have with the trade partners, that, that is not a, an avenue that we could seek. Everything's lump sum, so they bury the risk. The steel went down, we wouldn't, you know, they couldn't come back to us just as much as if the steel went up and they would have more of a savings.
Yeah. And the last thing is regarding the budget. Are we still on budget as far as you know, moving forward? Thank you.
We are on budget, yes.
You asked a counselor, Jim? Counselor Janes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First through to the construction team, I want to thank you guys for coming down and, and giving us this presentation. I think it's very important that, that we get this information, but also the public watching the meeting have this information and know what to expect when students, staff return to school in the coming days. So thank you again for being here. Thanks to the manager for setting this up. And if the co-maker of the motion with me is cool with it, I think we can check off 11-5 and move on because that was a request to have them come in. So they're here. Thank you.
Let me quickly took at the, look at the motion 11-5. So, so 11-5, both of you would like to withdraw that motion? Okay, that would be fine. Any other comments from any counsel, counselor Musia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that there are times when I'm the most critical, but what you presented tonight was very informative. You're doing what I feel you should do, so I want to congratulate you. So far, so good. And I didn't mean to be critical, but this is something that we have to oversee and you're doing okay. Thank you so much.
Counselor, drink water?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the, the construction team, I just wanted to ask for a little bit more information regarding the pending change order requests that were, that were mentioned and included in the presentation. And they mentioned that there are about $700,000 of outstanding change order requests. Can you talk just a little bit about, you know, what the, the process is? Obviously, you know, contractors, once they're, they're working, they encounter something that maybe they didn't expect and, and you know, put in a request for a change order. And I know this is sort of the, will probably be the biggest contributing factor to the, to the use of the contingency account. So I know these are things that are, you know, just because it's requested doesn't mean this is going to be paid out. So could you maybe just provide a little bit of detail into how these are reviewed and/or, you know, negotiated and whether we can expect this number to, you know, be near the requested amount or somewhat, somewhat below?
The change requests from subcontractors are first submitted to Suffolk Construction and as they are, construction manager, not a general contractor on this project. They are not passed through to us. They are first vetted and negotiated by Suffolk with the trade partners before they are then submitted to the project team of Skanska, the owner's project manager, as well as Perkins Eastman, the architect. And Perkins Eastman also submits them to their consultants depending on the trade-specific nature of the change request. They are then vetted once again by Skanska and Perkins Eastman and negotiated, which is on top of the negotiation, which Suffolk would have already performed with the subcontractors. They are then reviewed with the city for They are then reviewed with the city for, for sign off, once Perkins Eastman and Skanska have signed off them. So there was a very thorough review of these, and I can assure you that we are all looking out for the city's interest, and there are some heated discussions on these changes, pushing back, making sure that the city is getting the absolute best value.
Thank you for that explanation. And just to make sure I understood it correctly, so the, the number in the presentation, the $705,000, so these have, these are requests that have actually been put forward by trade subcontractors and have already been vetted in, in some cases between the subcontractor and Suffolk? Or have they kind of yet to be vetted and agreed upon in an amount to come forward?
By Suffolk, and they're currently in the process of being vetted by Perkins Eastman and Skanska.
Okay, thank you. And I was glad to hear you mention that, you know, these are being, being scrutinized. You know, obviously, not, not every order that, that comes forward is, you know, going to be something ultimately, I think the, will ultimately be signed off on. And I appreciate the, the scrutiny that, that's applied to all these that are, that are put forward, but I, I thank you for the clarification on the number.
Any other comments or questions by counselors or city administration? Here, I want to thank you, the, the team for coming to make a presentation again. As Counselor Musia mentioned, this is very informative, very useful, and very timely. Thank you so much. We now will go back to resuming the agenda with the motion response.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Musia?
Is there anybody in the audience behind us that have something on the agenda? We wouldn't want to go through all the responses, and they're sitting here waiting. Any, is there, is that woman that's supposed to want to speak on an issue, is she here? Is there any?
Okay, what, Mr. Clerk, what item number it is that we have a?
6.1E, registered speaker.
6.1E. Give me a moment.
It would be best to do those people first, so they don't have to stick around all night long.
Okay, we're, we're about to approach that also anyway, but that's the motion response E, a motion by Counselor Musia to take that out of order, second by Counselor Janes, motion response E, various traffic calming initiatives. That was a motion by myself, Counselor Scott, Counselor Yam, Counselor Gishia, and Counselor Robinson. Mr. Clerk, please call the registered speaker.
Paul Early. Hello, my name is Paul Early, and I live at 476 Pine Street. And I'd like to speak in favor of it, but I would suggest that we may be expand it and think about examining all streets when we go to pave them, especially through streets, that we should examine all streets for traffic calming. So my, my history is, my house was hit by a car speeding down Pine Street. My car was totaled in the driveway, back porch was torn off. My wife and three kids were hit in the crosswalk while crossing the street to catch the bus. My neighbor refused to park her car in the driveway for a long time because she had two cars totaled by cars piling down Pine Street. So it's not just, and it's not just Pine Street, it's Boylston, it's Varnum, it's West Six, it's Sixth Street, it's West Meadow, it's Varnum, it's, you know, Fairmount, all over the city. Stedman is, is worse than Pine Street even, so. And I think anytime we open up a street to pave it, or anytime we move to pave a street, we should look at calming it. And maybe before they start paving, take some of these, these, you know, these ideas and try to narrow them down with, with paint first, and then see what works. But I think the, the speeding is, it's not just speeding, it's, you know, it's, it's just reckless driving too, so. So I don't want to take up more of your time. Thank you for your time, consideration, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Early. Anyone else in the audience that's here to speak on any issue? Okay, here none. We now return back to this, anyone?
We, we have a lady here that wants, is going to speak. Oh, I see. We have a, that woman under petitions that wants to address the city council about Rin, Rin Beach, Rin Beach.
Okay, motion by Counselor Musia to take item 10.6 out of order, second by Counselor Gishia. Item 10.6 miscellaneous, Norma Von Fricken, request permission to address city council regarding Ryan Beach. Mr. Clerk, please call the registered speaker.
Norma Von Fricken.
Go ahead up to the podium, Norma.
Thank you very much. I'll be brief, really. Sunday, August 14th, mid-afternoon, I was driving along Pawtucket Boulevard past Rin's Beach. No cars, very unusual, because every Saturday for this past whole summer, it has been packed, Saturday and Sunday, if you may have noticed, the whole Boulevard is packed, bumper to bumper, almost all the way down to McDonald's. People picnicking. It was wonderful, I have to tell you, it was wonderful to see all those people out after a few years of isolation and, anyway. So that place is a blessing for low-income.
Ms. Fricken, would you speak into the microphone, please?
Huh?
Would you speak into the microphone, so I can hear you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that, that beach is a blessing for people, low-income people who can't afford to go away on vacation, don't have pools. It's a resort for us. Then I noticed maybe a few dozen, maybe a dozen people, in spite of the fact the sign read "No Swimming." Why? The Canada geese took over. Thank you. Oh, thanks a lot, yeah. Feathers and droppings litter the beach and grass, and still do. And it's not just the Boulevard, they're a general menace, especially since their numbers are increasing. The biggest problem, of course, it's unsanitary, it's uncouth, the droppings are infested with parasites that cause E. coli and other illnesses. The following weekend was the Asian Water Festival, same problem. The geese were frolicking. This does not look good for people coming from out of state to Lowell. It does not look good for the people of Lowell. It's a health hazard, and there is no excuse. How about getting after the National Park people? A $2.8 million budget annually. Assemble a task force, shoot them. Yes, shoot them with unleaded bullets, and don't tell anybody, or you'll have the animal rights people after you. And be pragmatic, they're good eating. Find a wholesale meat packer, sell them. These are changed, pressed times. We have to be creative and find new ways of doing business. And you may think killing geese is mean and outrageous, but what's outrageous and harebrained is facing a housing crisis as evictions are also increasing. $350 million for a high school is outrageous. So is a $2 million, .8 million budget annually for Historic National Park. Homelessness is a subject we can hardly exhaust. We have to find housing. That's what has to be done, and get rid of those geese, please. Don't bring in any more immigrants from anywhere.
Ms. Fricken?
We have to take care of the people in Lowell.
Ms. Fricken?
Thank you very much.
I understand that you're here to speak on Ryan Beach?
Pardon?
Okay, I understand that you're, you're done, correct?
I'm sorry, I-
Are you here to speak on Ryan Beach or something else?
That was the beach.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Any comments by any counselor? Need a motion to accept and place on file by any counselor? Here none, motion fail. We now go back to resume the agenda on the motion response. We'll start with A, motion response, gauge field, basketball court, and park improvement. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I'd like to thank Ms. McCall for this report. Again, now, I know some money came in a little while ago that was earmarked for like, pretty much, open space improvements from, at the time, Rep. Golden. And, and I believe that was for Centerville, Pawtucketville. Would that be a potential funding mechanism for a project like this? I didn't, if so, I wasn't sure what basket that was labeled under on potential funding mechanisms on this report. And I think a couple of things in this report really stood out to me. While the idea is innovative, it's not unprecedented. The Zeus Eco mural in Los Angeles, California reduces surface temperature of the building it's painted on by up to 30 percent. That number stood out to me tremendously. I also appreciate the fact, this is an opportunity for the city to lead by example and catalyze similar efforts in neighboring municipalities. So I really thank you. I think this is the kind of projects that we've been discussing, and, and I think it kills, so to say, two birds with one stone, so I'd appreciate any efforts. Thank you.
These reports are always eye-opening to me. I, I always think it's a wish list versus reality. Reality is, people have champagne tastes, and we don't even have a beer budget. We, we can't even buy bottled water. And when you look at this, at the place I work, we had the basketball court painted for under $1,000. You know, you can outline it and then go to Case and have them come in and have local artists paint whatever they want on it, but there's also a maintenance cost when you start spending these, these funds, and the maintenance costs we'll never be able to keep up with. I have a house that I have to paint, you know, every six to 10 years to keep up the seed of shakes, and, and every time I paint it, I think, why wouldn't I go to vinyl siding or to aluminum? Because in the future, we're not going to be able to afford it as we get older. And, and I just think these are great reports, but they're just not something that's reality for our city right now. And sure, we can use opera money, or sure, we can use some other monies, but I think they'd be well spent somewhere else rather than like this. But I, I mean, I like the report, but I think that when you look at the numbers, they, they scare everybody. Thank you.
Any other comments? Here, now we'll go to the next one. B, motion response, 15-minute parking updates on parking study attachment, with attachment by Counselor Yam, by myself, Counselor Yam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Ms. McCall and the manager. I appreciate the detailed report on the parking issue throughout the city, but my motion is simply deal with the 15-minute parking for a business that's been around for, in the city for a long time. Right now, there is a, an empty, the sign 15-minute in front of an empty lot that used to be the St. Vincent's thrift shop. So if you look across the street from that Vincent thrift shop, you'll see the, the Brother Pizza, who just won a 15-minute in front of their shop, so that the customer can pick up the pizza without having to fight for a space to park. You can put it on Cabot Street, which is not as busy as Merrimack Street. So this is the only request. Simple, take the 15 minutes from the empty parking lot across the street from the Brother Pizza, put it right in the corner where the, the pizza on Cabot Street. That's all. This is a great report, but it has to do with a lot of the city problem throughout. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Just a quick comment from up here, if there's no objection, I want to thank you, the manager's office, and Christine McCall for the report. I agree with the movement towards eliminating the 15-minute because it might affect more, more businesses than it helps. But also, I like the part about the, looking at each request on a case-by-case situation. There might be a business that might be a standalone on the whole block that might benefit from a 15-minute parking, and it would not affect other businesses because the other business might be too far or not in the proximity. So I'd just like to make sure that we always consider each request on a case-by-case basis. Thank you. Counselor Scott?
Mr. Mayor, do you think it would be prudent maybe to refer to the Economic Development Subcommittee for further discussion on it?
That is a great idea. Motion by Counselor Scott to refer to the Economic Development, second by Counselor Yam. Any other comments? And now, we now go to the next motion response, C, North Common Bathroom and Concession Stand Improvement. Counselor Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager and Ms. McCall. It's a great report again, and it's, it's go to the facts that the city received opera money, and it was originally talked about assigning or allocating money to different neighborhood group. Counselor Corey Robinson suggested $2 million, and I would be happy just a million dollars to each, each of the, of the district, so that we can deal and take care of our park that are, that are, like, the North Common could use that. The bathroom is already there, only the, updating the bathroom and open up to the youngster who plays games at the field. I know the fire department needs more money to buy new trucks and all of that. So with that said, Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager, do you know when we would have the breakdown of opera money that will be assigned for different projects? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Counselor, we're actually working on that right now, and we're hoping mid to late September that we'll have something for folks to digest, look at, and start to attack. We are very excited about what's happening here, and, you know, you are correct with things like fire vehicle, vehicles and things of that nature, but we're also very cognizant of parks as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Man, manager.
Counselor Gishia?
Again, the, the motion was to have the appropriate department renovate the bathrooms with the concession stand on the North Common for the use by Little League. Little League baseball plays from April to mid-June. The report came back at $704,000. If we have trash cans down there that need to be replaced, there's 10 of them. We have a Parks Department budget that we just passed with $80,000 in it. We should replace the barrels. On top of the report as it goes along, to replace the barrels, you're also adding a 15 percent design and engineering fee to that. So I don't know who's going to design the barrel and why we need an engineering fee, but I guess that's on top. Benches, we had a school just build benches for us, and we placed them in parks. You look at that, $1,900. You're looking, I mean, picnic tables, $3,000 each, $3,090 for a picnic table. I'm going to get into the business. And then you add on top of that the engineering and design fee of 15 percent. So when you look at all of these bills, you look, replace trash cans, replace benches, signage, we have a sign shop, $4,800 for signage, we got a sign shop. Repaint mural, handball, Case should be able to do that, that's $12,000. Paint mural on retaining wall, $4,500. All of these got added on top of those costs, another 15 percent. The initial thing just said, okay, let's renovate a concession stand for Little League baseball. I'm sure we can afford trash cans in the Parks Department budget to put out there so we don't get charged 15 percent on top of that for engineering design services. I'm sure we can go to a- I'm sure we can go to a school up the street and have benches built and put out there, and you won't have to pay even the cost we have. These things that come before us are so expensive that I sometimes think I'm living in Concord. It's just, it's tough to read, and most of this is maintenance items that we should be maintaining all along. Trash barrels, signage, park benches, you know, the fence over there. So for me to look at this stuff and even take it seriously, it's hard to believe that we're even looking at this. And I don't care where the money comes from, because it's still taxpayers' money, whether it comes from CB, CDBG funds or some other fund. We could use them somewhere else. It's just a very, very tough report to read when all they wanted to do is get bathrooms ready for Little League. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. Again, these are, these are the kind of projects we're discussing. If you remember a while back, when we first got a presentation for potential usage of ARPA, it was unbalanced. These are the kind of projects that the community's been loud. Again, QCT zones. A couple of these areas that have popped up with in need, desperate need of major renovations in all areas of the park to increase the quality of life for the residents of that area, which are densely populated, QCT zones. That's why I think when we start looking at breaking up ARPA and distributions of ARPA, the needs of the residents in each district are completely separate. So I think that's why it's so important to find what's a comfortable number for everybody to divide out amongst the districts. So then, projects like these, again, these are one-time funds that you're probably not going to get a shot to do a major rental like this. And if you look at return on investment, how many people in the acre are going to be impacted? Their quality of life when you do a complete rental on a project like this. So I mean, it's something to be mindful of. I think some of this stuff is large-scale. But at the same time, a large-scale rental of a property like this that impacts so many people hasn't been done in how long? I mean, the cans have been kicked on the road in some areas for quite some time, and now we have the opportunity to pick the can up finally, so. Thank you very much for the report.
Counsel Noone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur with my fellow counselor, and I know that the manager will have opportunity to, as he look at how he's going to disperse those ARPA fund. I think, you know, the least they should get is the bathroom and the concession stand. Bathroom would come first, because those kids have no place to go, you know. So I think I strongly feel that we need to have it for them, for the Little League there. And I know the managers will look at this as he look to disperse this ARPA fund. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council, Council Noone. Exactly, I mean, I think that the renovate the existing, you know, public bathroom, the concession stand, that's an idea. But I think that some of our planners are always looking, you know, for the whole thing. I think as I've got to know some of the planners, they're very excited about renovating, you know, that major renovation. But to the point that Counsel Kishia brings up, you know, this is always a balance. So some of these reports are something that we can look at and kind of pick through and say, this is something we can do, this is something we should do. So it is exciting, and I know that Counsel Yem's very excited about the bathroom, and you're absolutely correct, because some of the parks have it. But I think when we move to ARPA and how we're going to attack our parks, which everybody is utilizing, I think these are just going to give us some ideas where, I want to say it's like a menu of things, hey, how about that? Why don't we try to do this where every park is getting a little bit of a facelift? Or maybe, maybe it's a major facelift. But we're seeing that, and I think the planning department is always excited to give us these plans because that's, quite frankly, that's how they look at these things. They look for the future, they look at what it could look like. So, thank you.
Counsel Kishia.
You know, we really truly have to talk reality with these ARPA funds and not politics. You know, in Centerville, we look, and Counsel Robinson will tell you, there's raw sewage flowing all over Lakeview Ave. We have a fire department that is in need of equipment immediately. So we have to be realistic with these funds and not be politics. We can change a barrel. I promise you, the Parks Department can buy barrels and put them out there. I don't need to have, you know, engineering design and studies done on that. When we're looking at this, we have to be realistic on how we're going to spend this money. And when we look at it, I have faith that the manager is going to look at quality of life issues before a park that's being used from one date to another date. You know, all winter, we don't use them. So we need to put public safety at the top of the chart, and I know that I would love to have $2 million to spend in my district, but I would rather have a fire truck. Thank you.
Any other comments? Here none, we now go to the next motion response. D, Fletcher Street Line Striping. Counsel Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to manager and Ms. McCall, I just want to thank you for the report. I know Fletcher Street is wide enough. I know sometime the line can help the mental that people can park on that. So whenever the time come to draw the line from the Taylor, the London Taylor, that's a new bridge from the Lord Overpass that would be greatly appreciated all the way to Broadway. I've seen some of the new line painting, and I really excited to see that, you know, the new line. And I would love to see finally the line from that Fletcher Street, beginning of the Lord Overpass all the way to Broadway. I appreciate that very much, Mr. Manager. Through you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That was motion response D. The next one is line item E. We already taken that up. We now go to item F, motion response historical electricity cost. Counsel Kishia.
Thank you. You know, thank you for the report. I think it's a great report. It's a good starting point. When we look at energy costs, we have to do better. So as we start looking, I wonder if, through you maybe to the manager, if we can start looking into putting motion detectors in the rooms to shut off some of these lights? Because, you know, as we drive by some of the fire stations, if they're out of the fire, if we had a motion detector in there that could shut them off when there's not activity. I think that there's a large savings when we start looking into those simple fixes to try to make savings. When you look at these costs and you look at the percentages that they're rising, it's just going to be tough for all of us to manage. So I thank you for the report. I think it's a report that we can certainly maybe spend a little and get some grants and put these things into action. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Counsel, that's a great idea. Ms. Moses, I know, would be a big fan of that. But, you know, the interesting thing during COVID, when some of these costs started to increase, it's because people actually were not there to notice that the room was 80 degrees or the lights weren't just on. So we had those issues, and I think that that is something that Ms. Moses and I will be looking at. And I know she's already probably got a boatload of those answers, so. Thank you very much, and that's something we will continue to move forward on.
Counsel Mosier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those at home that are probably trying to figure out what we're talking about with this motion by Counselor Scott, it talked about the different areas of the way that we saved with our utilities and our solar energy systems specifically. And when you add this all up, oh, I think I'm on the next one. I think I'm on the next one. Okay, so.
You might as well, because I don't think there's any other comment.
Should I wait?
You can continue.
But this all kind of ties in together, and although you, well, I'm ahead of the game. I'm trying to move this along, but anyway. And we see the Butler, oh, I'm sorry, maybe Kim Scott, Counselor Scott, wants to talk about that. Did you want to? I'm sorry.
You'll let her finish it, as she started it?
You can go.
You can finish it, Counselor.
But that was a great motion because it brought in so much information about the Butler School, O'Reilly, the Patagonville Shaughnessy Lowell Memorial Auditorium, Wastewater, and all the places that the city saved, $3.4 million. That's unbelievable. I'm shocked to hear that. And then it went all the way, this is what I was concerned about. Hunt Farm located in Orange and Adam Farm in Athol. So I'd like to ask Catherine Moses, how does this tie in? We have an investment in those two areas there? I didn't know that.
Ms. Moses.
Thank you. Thank you for the question, Counselor Mercier. So the way that the Adams and the Hunt Farm facilities work, they're net metering credit facilities, and Lowell is what's called the host customer of those facilities. So there are these large systems that are located outside the city of Lowell, and they generate net metering credits, which can then be applied against our utility bills. And we get a discount on the energy that is supplied. So it's a three-cent discount, and then when the net metering credit rate goes over a certain amount, we get an extra percentage off. But it's something that's been very effective in helping us to reduce our overall electricity costs. And we're always looking for additional opportunities to take advantage of similar mechanisms, so.
So here's another fine example of the way we hire people and we pay them a salary, but they bring back more, more, more than we could ever imagine. So to the $200, $3.4 million, you're earning your pay there, darling. Yes, you are. Thank you so much.
Counsel Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just, Counselor Mercier said it all, I think. But I would just thank Ms. Moses just for continuing to look that the properties are operating properly. Residents have reached out about one minor mistake on the report, and that was corrected. But like I said, it's just prudent for us just to stay on top of these and notice how much we are saving when we have discussions on moving forward with future projects. Thank you.
Counsel Kishia.
Through you, Mayor Chow, to Catherine. The water utility, why is that underperforming versus everyone else is either right at the estimate or above? But the water utility seems to be underperforming by 5%, so I'm just wondering why that one is the outlier.
I think I'm not sure exactly what's going on with the water utility. I think it might be one of two things. There are some gaps in the data, so each of the behind-the-meter solar system has a data acquisition system that will tell you how much it's producing, when it's producing, and things like that. And so there's an online site where you can access that. There are some gaps in that data, and it's not really clear exactly what caused those gaps. Sometimes there's a communication error, sometimes some portion of the system is down. Another piece of it, I don't know what the estimates are that were embedded in the original proposal, but for example, for the facilities that we have at our schools and at LMA, they have what are called guaranteed, or guaranteed generation. And so when Amararesco designed those systems, they said that you will get at least this much output, year one, year two, three, all three of the 20 years. It's possible that the water agreement when it was set up, because it's a guaranteed kind of thing, they put a lot of conservative estimates for what it'll actually produce so that they're not underperforming. I'm not sure if those same assumptions went into the water system that they have there.
Could this be costing us funding if we're not reading correctly?
It's, so at the water system, because we own the panels, we do get SREC funding from that. So it's a system that was set up under a previous solar iteration where you actually receive money for the amounts that are generated. So if it is a systemic problem, it could be shorting us on those types of things. But I know I had reached out to the water department before this meeting, and they do have somebody that does their maintenance. And so there shouldn't be any ongoing problems in the future.
So do we record the numbers each month to say, okay, here's what we're running? And do we look at it every day to make sure that it is up and running?
I do not do that. I'm not sure if anyone at the water department does that. I typically will pull information on a monthly basis for my internal records.
Because when you look at, you know, the $600,000 a year for a 10-minute writing of reading, it makes sense to do that. One other question, Counsel Robinson had a motion on some time ago about adding solar panels to the Robinson School area. Are we still investigating that? And also on the high school, are we still looking in those projects? Because as we look at these savings, this is something that may be something that can generate a long-term savings for all of us. So are we still looking at other properties like that?
Yeah, so that's an excellent question. Thank you for the opportunity to update you on where we are on that process. So when we were looking at developing additional behind-the-meter solar assets, we wanted to look broadly across our portfolio. Where should we be doing things? We wanted to put out a solicitation that looked at all of the above strategies. What would it look like to do additional power purchase? What about ownership? What about a lease payment? Can you pair it with storage? Can you pair it with EV chargers, different kinds of configurations? So obviously, that leads to a lot of complications and a lot of, we were finding even in fitting it within the standard procurement regs, that there were some challenges. So the strategy that we changed to was to put out a request for information, requesting information from solar developers to look at different aspects of what we should think about procuring. And I just, that is in the purchasing department right now. It should be released hopefully soon. But that will give us a better idea of where we can do targeted kinds of things. And I'm also exploring the Inflation Reduction Act that was recently signed into law. It does have additional provisions that I think will actually make it more viable in some of our other properties because you have additional kinds of incentives. If, for example, you use prevailing wages and you use apprenticeships, of course, anything the city would do would be at the prevailing wage. There are also additional kickers for low-income areas, and there are a number of those as well. So we are still pursuing that. We're hoping to have that feedback. It's, I think I had written it to get feedback over a month's time period. We would look at those kinds of things, structure a more targeted type of solicitation, and continue looking for funding sources and the traditional types of instruments that we have.
I thank you for everything you're doing. If we can double this portfolio, Mr. Manager, you're talking about a $3.4 million extra in funding that we can turn into other areas that we need. And Catherine has been on top of it ever since I worked there. She was on top of those numbers, so I thank you for the report.
Counsel Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Ms. No. Another question that I have is that, you know, we heard the report that a certain section of the city, including the acre, the Low Highland, is heated, really heated. And when we were in Vermont, we saw that the city of Burlington, Vermont create a parking with the solar panel as a roof. I can think of the senior center parking lot would be a perfect location to have such a parking with the solar on top that generating additional electricity to, you know, to service the, at least the senior center or more. Is that a way we can look at that? And would you kindly look at the whole options? And then maybe hopefully you can present it to the council sometime in the future. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No other comments? We'll now move on to the next line item. H, motion response, McPherson Park Art Installation. Any comment, Counselor?
Thank you. This report's great. Real briefly, though, so what with, with a report like this, what would be the next step? Would you, would, would there be a recommendation that it goes to Subcommittee? Arts Culture Subcommittee or something along those lines to kind of go through? And I mean, because I'm glad to see that there are options with a space like this, but I'm seeking a little bit of guidance as to how do we get it there. Thank you.
Through Mr. Manager to Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Counsel Robinson. I think moving it to a Subcommittee is actually a great idea. As you say, there are a lot of options that are open to us, and I would really love to hear from the council. Thoughts on you guys on how you would like to see us utilize some of those spaces that now are going sort of underutilized as potential art installation sites? So I would welcome the opportunity to further the conversation on that.
Thank you very much. Can I make a motion then to send this to Arts and Culture Subcommittee, is it?
Sure. Motion by Counsel Robinson to refer Motion by Council Robinson to refer to the Art Subcommittee, seconded by Councilor Janice. Any other comments? Thank you, Peter. And now we now go to the next motion response, I, North Common Art Installation. Any comment, Councilor Yen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Crew. I just want to let you know, I appreciate it, you respond. It's a great suggestion. I have ours already forward the motion response to Elias Olmo and he received it and he will proceed as you suggested to have that bench painted. I appreciate your report. Thank you so much. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Councilman Yen. And I actually meant to reach out to Mr. Olu today. I have a direct number for him, so I'll reach out tomorrow to him as well on follow-up, but we can certainly get this moving along pretty quickly.
Yeah, I already did on your behalf to forward that to him and have him proceed accordingly. Thank you.
Great.
No other comments? We'll now go to the next line item, J motion response, student artwork along the Riverwalk. Any comment, Councilor Robinson?
Nope, thank you. I'd also like to make a motion to send this over to the Arts Subcommittee because there is mention of potential grant that if awarded, it would allow students to take part in some of this project. So because that's unknown, I'd make a motion to send this over to the Subcommittee as well.
Motion by Council Robinson to refer to the Art Subcommittee, seconded by Councilor Nguyen. No other comments? We'll now go to motion response, K, tax-exempt properties reported. Any comment, Councilor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. When you look at this, you see that almost 10% of our budget is non-taxable when you look at the numbers. And then 13.5 pages of it is City of Lowell owned properties. Through you to the manager, could you look at this and see if there are properties that the city of Lowell currently owns that we could sell off to the public and try to get it back onto the tax base so that we can try to lower some of these, these numbers?
Mr. Manager?
Sorry. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. We had just hired a new attorney for the city of Lowell. We are looking at that. I'm hoping that that is going to be completed by October and there's no reason why this particular piece couldn't be included in that, to find out if there is additional property that would be more beneficial for another, I will call it an economic development proposal or quite frankly, even trying to help out a neighborhood with vehicles, parking and things of that nature. I'm very happy with what's been happening up with law in regards to this and I want to tell you it's going to be in the October timeframe where we're going to be looking at all of what I'm going to refer to in a grand scheme of surplus properties. So that is absolutely something we can do as well, to look right through here to find out how we could dispose or sell, probably the better way to say it, sell some of this property.
Yeah, because I think reducing our inventory would actually create revenues for us, so I think that's important to us. Thank you.
Yep. Attorney McKenna, I apologize, I froze for a minute. John, we all know him actually. Attorney McKenna is the gentleman that's just came back and he is up there doing that, well, I don't know if as we speak, but he's been tackling this project.
Your side, Councilor? Councilor Moses?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did find, going over this with a little bit of interest and I'm concerned about all the property, Lowell property that is like, other than like a swamp or something like that, but there's property, for example, 214.1 Burnham Road on my street, I don't have a swamp that I can see on my street, but it's City of Lowell and it's $154,000 is what the, it's assessed for or whatever. I don't understand, but many years ago, we had what was called a yard sale program and we offered it out to abutters, like if there were two abutters, one here and one there and the property was in the middle. We offered it to them to pay some price and at least it's putting it on the tax roll. I don't know why we can't do that today. Is there such a thing that we can look over this property and try to figure who lives, maybe there's four or three abutters to it and they each want a proportion of it and we could divide it in three ways to help them? I don't know. That's just something that I think we could do and try to save whatever we can instead of saying City of Lowell, $154,000. And then I have another concern because on page 28 is, it's got, oh, maybe, I don't know, maybe 10 pieces of whatever it is, says zero, it's private, private, and it's suppressed, but it's got a total there and I'm wondering, what does that mean? Thank you. I'm just curious about it, that's all.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Councilor, on your first concern or first thought, that is exactly what we want to do. Law Department once again has been digging deep on this. This probably will take us a little time. I don't believe we've done this type of sale for quite a few years. So my goal would be to say 214 Burnham, you know, maybe look at the folks on either side and see if they're interested in purchasing it. On the other piece, the suppressed portions are homes that myself as well as the team thought it would be necessary to not, well, they're, they're homes for children and homes for domestic violence and things of that nature.
Oh, I see.
So it's something that we just felt it was important enough just to
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Kind of suppress that information. And of course, if the council would like that, you know, sent to you privately, that's something I'd be more than happy to do. But it's, once again, it's the way we look at this. There are some of those homes that we just want to
I did not realize.
Keep everyone safe.
It was just out of curiosity.
Nope, it's absolutely.
I didn't know. That's, that's a good answer. Also, I'm thinking about the property, and this is a good report, very lengthy. I just feel bad for the department head that had to put this together because I don't know if they
Council Ellen loves doing this.
They have no work.
This is her wheelhouse.
I appreciate it because you put a lot of work in this and I know that you need to do your own day-to-day work, so I appreciate the fact. And I don't want to add to that, but I'm concerned as well about the pilot program in lieu of taxes. And I want to know, can we get any more? I know that UMass Lowell gives something. I know CTI gives quite a bit of their fair share. I do understand that. But is everybody cooperating? I think they can, there's no set rule that says you have to give X number of percentage even in lieu of taxes. I don't know. So they give what they can and I think they could give more when, when people can buy a Spitter Stadium, I'm sure they could pay a little bit more in lieu of taxes, but that's just my opinion and I'm sticking with it. But anyway, I'd be concerned about that too.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. I may ask Ellen to come up here for a moment, but we do have pilots that are out and the partners that we have, Lowell Housing Authority, UMass Lowell. For instance, Lowell Housing Authority just happened, the number happens to be in front of me and we're probably talking to the tune of a pilot of $425,000. So they are definitely paying, you know, money towards things that they have. And I'm not sure, Ellen, we just talked about this earlier today in regards to pilots and council is, because I brought, I brought this on so late, if there, did you, were you able to capture some of those numbers from the other pilots?
Yes, I was, through you, Mr. Mayor. What I was able to pull out of the system right now, we do have a pilot with Boots Hydro, which is about $45,000 a year. And also Lowell, he mentioned Lowell Housing. And then there's another Duville, which I think is a, something that goes for first responders.
Yeah, Duville.
Duville, sorry. For your other question, Councilor, I do have some experience negotiating pilots in my former community. It's, it's a lengthy process. It's building community and it's building those relationships with the nonprofits and actually sending them a letter and asking for them to do their consideration. We have used formulas of pulling out and just calling out a rate that's based on public safety costs and would they be willing to contribute to that? So it's something that we can explore. As you know, I've only, I just passed my 90-day mark, so still getting my feet wet in the office, but definitely something to put on my, my list to work with the city manager on.
I don't want to bleed anybody, but I do like to see if we can get a little bit more. That's good. Thank you so much.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Maybe this is an opportunity for us, as everyone knows, Ellen, I think you're in week three? Week four? But maybe we can start to pull some of the pilot issues back and disseminate it to the council so they can see who is paying what and what's going on. But, you know, so far, what I have witnessed is our, our partners, you know, they get it. I mean, I believe it's to the tune of about $260,000 that the state gives for the state lands, but it's not going to be enough. But that's something we can advocate through our House delegation and the Senator to see if we can obviously get more money with that. But maybe if we could put a report together for the, for the council and give them the entire pilot program.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor. Thank you.
Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had one question for the city manager. Page 27 to page 28 has about 40 properties listed for Residence First Development Corp., which is the old Shaughnessy, and it shows, like I said, 40 empty lots, basically. And with the housing shortage we're in right now, do you know if there's any movement or anything to get those on the tax rolls? I mean, that's a big chunk of land.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Council, yes, we have been having a discussion with the Lowell Housing Authority on how to move forward on that. That is Rivers Edge, as you know. That's the, I would like to call it phase three. They may call it phase two, but I think it's that, that last phase is in the back and that's, they are trying to get that up and running. And it's going to be, once again, a continuation of the wonderful work that LHA and Rivers Edge and all the partners out there, Residence First, actually, that, that has done that. So that is something that we have been in discussions with and my hope is that happens sooner rather than later. But I can keep the council updated as, as this happens because I think it's going to come right into what we've been talking about is trying to continue to make available more affordable homeownership. I think that's what the city is really trying to push and what it really needs is that affordable homeownership where people have that opportunity to purchase their home and create generational wealth, so.
Yeah, exactly. And this is just, it seems like this has been a long time coming for these to be developed. So I was just curious if there's anything that we can do or, you know, any involvement that we can have, I mean, to
Your phone will probably, Councilor, your phone's probably going to ring tomorrow because you just said that. But they are, the folks over at Residence First, they have been, and we have been talking about it and they're trying to move forward. They have some, I'll say, housekeeping matters that they have to deal with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Yen?
Just a quick comment. I understand that the list of the property, I know one of them is being sold and we will discuss it in the 7.1, 93 Mammoth Road, the city have sold it to private developers. That's a old firehouse, so that should be right now on the list of tax-exempt property. So hopefully it will fall off from the tax, tax exempt. So speaking of that list of the tax-exempt property, is there a way that, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager, that council will receive, not every month, maybe quarterly or something like that, updating so, because certain property was sold and it will fall off? What we want to do personally, I would want to see if already sold it but may not fall off from the list. So I just want to double-check, be sure that the property sold like 93 Mammoth Road will fall off from the tax exempt list along with other property. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And through you to the council. Councilor, my hope is that October, and I'm going to put a, I'm going to say a fictitious date of October 1st. I hope that the Law Department has everything ready. So when I say October 1st, it could be in that week. And that's when we're going to start looking at the disposition of, of land. You know, it may be what Council Mercy was saying earlier where there would be, you know, a person on the left and the right and they could split it down the middle and, you know, that would be helpful. But I also want to take the opportunity to look at development opportunities. Is there land out there where it would be more beneficial if it were added over here to create, once again, what I think this council has been looking for, and that's that affordable homeownership opportunity. And some of the instances that are already going on currently right now, I'd like to say that I came in somewhat in the third quarter with some of the development and I would never want to mess with what they're doing, whether it be rental or, you know, business and rental and whatnot. But this is definitely within what I feel is extremely important. I know that the council has talked about trying to create, you know, more affordable homeownership in this city and I would hope, you know, once again, it's not, it's been very difficult. This, this program, this disposition of land hasn't happened in many years. So, and I know, I'm very, very happy with what the Law Department has been doing, getting this up and ready. I just hope that October 1st is that date. So that's what we've been shooting for.
Thank you.
And I'm glad to keep you up to date because, believe me, if I could cut that, cut this in half, we would like to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
No other comments? We'll now go to the next motion response, item line L, vehicle inventory. Any comment, Councilor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to the manager. One of the major pieces to this report should have been, and, you know, we waited eight months for this report, it should have been future costs for these vehicles. When we look at, you know, this report, everything in here says 15 years useful life. It was almost like my 12-year-old kid went through it and said, 15 years' life, okay, everyone put 15 years' worth of life? Because I could tell you right now, a wastewater vactor truck does not last 15 years and that's not the life expectancy of it. And when you start looking at some of these things in here, you're like, okay, someone put 15 years' useful life. And then there's no, there's no value to anything. You got, we're looking at a new ladder truck, $1.3 million. Out of the four we have, two of them are already over and there's another one that needs to be replaced within two years because that one's going over. So that's $3.9 million just for those. And then when you look at the pumper trucks, you say the same thing. You know, there's eight of those and four of them have already met their useful life and one of them is within two years. So out of that amount, you almost got 65% of the vehicles out of those are over. And it's not any reflection on you because you weren't here to even draw up any of these things. To me, when we looked at these reports, they said they were turning these in every year, which there's no way. They can say whatever they want, there was no way this report was ever given to the Greens community as they said they were doing because they were going through energy efficiency of vehicles. There's no way any of this went through. And without cost, it doesn't shed light on to all the counselors what our debt is. You know, when we look at assets and liabilities, there is no way anybody calculated with our assets and liabilities where for these equipment. What do we have for an asset and what's a liability? The fire department goes out and you look at 22 pieces of equipment out of 43 have already met their useful life expectancy. And never mind just them, you look at wastewater, wastewater 18 out of 32 have already met. So when you're looking at all of this equipment, and that's at the 15 years, which one would question whether any of these are on pace for that expectation. I think going forward, if we can actually get a value associated with each piece of equipment for replacement costs so that we can look for future capital planning, you can't capital plan like this without future costs on our end. You know, and that's, that's a serious misstep financially for any community. You know, half of our revenue is in vehicles and, you know, this city has never been serious about capital planning towards vehicles. We let them run into the ground. Some of them, I'm not even sure could even pass inspection, but we won't say that out loud because we'll just send somebody out and it, and, you know, get the stickers. But a lot of these, thank God for OPER. Without OPER, we have no wastewater trucks, we'll have no water trucks and we'd have fire trucks that they're already at their useful life expectancy. And I knew this when we looked at this and asked for this report back in January, long before you were here. So I do think that we need better reporting on this going forward for budget outliers so that we can actually look at something and so that we can actually look at something and understand what are our liabilities? How can we capital plan to save future funding? And I'm sure that when we look at these vehicles, we're spending heavy costs and maintenance costs to them, and that we could have purchased something and saved the money and had a happy employee behind the vehicles. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And through you to the council. Counselor, you're, you're right. I mean, this has been quite some time in the making. The, I think this report is a great start. It is definitely not going to go on the shelf. We've had this discussion, as a matter of fact. It's changed over in the past two weeks. One of the issues that, that I had, and I purposely held this back as far as pricing, some of the pricing we were looking at was just going gas, just gas vehicles. And what I kind of want to pull back on is to see where we could go with electric vehicles inside of our fleet, which is going to change the pricing, as well as the charging stations. So I would like to, I would like to keep this report, I guess, active and still breathing, if you would, because this is not, this is the, I think this is a great start, but it definitely will not be the finish. My hope would be that, well, I hate to say by the end of this year, but definitely before the next budget cycle, we're going to know exactly if we should be purchasing electric vehicles here, there, how is that going to operate? So that's kind of the goal here that I'm looking at. This is the first step. We should have been doing this all along, and that has not been happening. Some of the departments, quite frankly, have been excellent with responses, and others are working towards getting better. So I look at this as, as, as just the beginning, and I'm going to be very happy. And I'm happy that you keep asking this because we need to know. The council's made it pretty clear in regards to where they want to go with electric vehicles or, or hybrid vehicles and so on and so forth. So I would like to kind of keep this as an open motion, Counselor, if that's okay with you, that we're going to continue to just update this, if that's, if that's your wish.
I'm just shocked that Powers and Sullivan didn't pick up on this stuff, and this wasn't in the financial report of the City of Lowell. I've never seen one have to be developed in 2022 like it is being developed now. And I credit your administration for even going this far because it's a challenge to employees to even look at this stuff and then call around to all the communities, Taylor and Lloyd, to find out, okay, what's a six-wheeler going to cost? And, you know, where are we going to get the breakdown? It's a challenge to do that.
We are, the council, to your point, we are having that problem as well. I was with Commissioner Byrne today, and we were talking about those six-wheelers and, you know, where are we going to get them? How are we going to get them? I don't want to, we have a couple of ideas, so I don't, I'm not going to, I don't want to make sure any of the DPW is listening right now, so we get some hopefully ideas anyhow.
We had this problem long ago when, when Manager Lynch was here, and he had to change over the whole fleet because of the same thing. And it just seems like 2008 to today, really not much was put in place for capital planning for all departments, but.
Right. We're going to be fortunate with the council here when it comes to OPER with the Fire Department. I think every council has made it very clear that what they, how they want to move forward. And anything other, any other pieces we can get through OPER, we will. But I would like to look at this particular piece as the beginning, and I think we're going to be, I think we're all going to be very satisfied in, in time, in time to come.
Counselor Yen?
Just a, a quick question. When a, say, ladder engine three, two-year, you know, after the useful life, are they still operational, you know? Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, Counselor, all of these vehicles are still operational in the Fire Department. We do have one issue right now that I believe it was Counselor Scott and Counselor Gitchia brought up last week in regards to the Gorm Street engine, engine one. Thank you very much, Counselor. Engine one, we are still waiting on a dollar figure. I think it's going to be in the tens of thousands to fix that. And Drake, as most of you know, has been so kind to loan us theirs. So we are in that process of trying to solve that problem. But every engine is working right now with the, the exception of engine one over on Gorm Street. But once again, while people are listening, we do have backup. We do have, we do have apparatus there.
If I could just follow up, when time to replace engine one, may I request that the city seriously look into the electric fire truck engine? I mean, you know, I've been asking, and I've been sending the video of a Fire Department in Madison that worked with a builder that, you know, that built the kind of engine. So if we could do that, that serves two purposes. This one, get a new fire truck. Number two is also fulfill our commitment, you know, zero admission is the city plan.
I have asked, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, through you.
Mr. Manager?
Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor. Counselor, that, I have talked to Chief Sharon about that, to look at that. Some of the concerns in my former life I have always had with EVs, electric vehicles, is a sense of the, the power, the opportunity that the, to make sure that they respond exactly the way the engines do today. That's a concern I have. I know some of the folks in the Fire Department have that concern as well, but we will continue to look at that to make sure that if that is something that could happen, you know, I'm just, I'm really concerned about the power that that has, especially with the cold weather. So that's just, but we've talked about that anyhow. Thank you.
Counselor Scott and then Counselor Robinson. Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually was going to just say a few things that City Manager Golden just said as far as the reliability for diesel engines, and, you know, there's a lot to consider before we look at that. But I do want to echo Counselor Gitchia's sentiments. I mean, we have, engine one is 24 years old. We have 22 years, 26 years, 27 years. So I guess right now, what I think we're all trying to figure out is how we get to a point that this doesn't continue to happen. You know, so we need that information for long-term planning. I know you're going to continue the motion anyways going forward. I was going to recommend sending it to the Finance Subcommittee, but I'll just leave that alone if, if you want to just continue, leave this open. So thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Counselor Scott just hit the nail on the head exactly what I was going to say first. We're talking public safety. I don't think that's the time to, to buy a high-ticket item that's not really proven yet when you start looking at electric fire apparatus. I think if, if we were in good shape with the rest of our fleet, that might be the time to give it a shot. But right now, that's not where we are. And then second, I was going to also ask, would this be better served going to a Finance Subcommittee? So that way, it's an open living document, can come back, and continued conversation can happen without kind of bugging down the council floor.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. The council's wishes, whichever it may be, I would just like, if you do take it, that's fine. I'd love to, I'd love the ability if the council would grant me that opportunity to continue to update it. That's all. I, I just think that this is a great first step. Over the past 12 weeks or so, we've been really working on this. I know, I'm looking at the commission, the deputy, the, the guys, and who have been really kind of drilling down on this, making this happen. But if the council, if it's the wish of the council to move it to Finance Subcommittee, I think that's a great idea. I would only ask that if I could continue to work on it, I guess simultaneously with you folks.
Counselor Robinson?
I, I mean, I'm open to whatever. I, I was just saying, so it's not something that we're tying up on the council, whereas you continuously work on it, and then, hey, Finance Subcommittee would be great because I have some updates and keep going that way. All right? So make a motion to keep this going in Finance Subcommittee, please.
Motion by Counsel Robinson, second by Counsel Scott. Any other comments or questions? Here none. We'll now move to the next motion response, line item M, school driveway improvement by DPW. Any comments, Counsel Leahy or Counselor Gitchia? Counselor Gitchia?
I read the report, and I thank you for that. Before November, are we looking at doing any crack sealing in any of these that, that can take the crack sealing?
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. Byrne?
Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. Yeah, we can absolutely, I can work with the Engineers Department and see if we can do any crack sealing in some of the driveways or entrances into the schools. Just in my report, I also included that we are doing three schools that we have budgeted in the capital plan that the council voted on, on this year's budget. However, we missed an opportunity because, you know, the budget's late, and usually we do the paving during the summer months when no school's in session. So that's going to get moved out to the, you know, late spring, early summer next year, those three schools. And that is the Riley, the Sullivan, and the Pine School right now.
Through you to the commissioner, Mr. Mayor. Do you know of any others that have gone past the failure like those three that are going to, that it's a waste of time even doing the crack sealing on? Because it doesn't make sense to crack seal something that's already at the endpoint rather than just use our monies in the right way to try to save the, the ones that are...
We can evaluate that. We'll go through some of the, those parking lot areas. Obviously, I think moving forward, as we prepare our next year's budget, I'm sure that we'll probably need to continue to keep some capital money in the parking lot areas for our schools.
It would make sense to go through and fill all the potholes, which are probably already filled now, so that they can actually seam seal the pothole, the, the patch to the pothole so that it prevents the water from getting over, and then you won't have to end up at those properties hopefully again.
Right. Yeah, we're doing that. We'll continue to do it. We'll continue to monitor that. We did a couple of overlays in a couple of the parking lots already, and we're going to, we're going to continue to keep working that over the next couple of days.
I'll bet you you never thought you were going to come back and see parking lots look like that.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Burns. The Pine, you said, was one of the schools they're still working on right now as well? Or?
No, the Pine will be, we have to prepare documentation and do takeoffs of those three schools. So through, through our department initiatives, through the city engineer Ting Chang and her staff, we're going to keep it in-house rather than sub it out and, and work them to prepare documentation to have bid packages ready, probably, you know, sometime early winter so that we're in the queue to have these, those three schools paved in the early summer.
Okay. I, I drove by there today because someone had reported illegal dumping, which I called in, and it was already picked up. But I went by just to check that it was. And the condition is pretty rough out there still right now, going around that loop, and also just the overgrowth and everything. And I know you're in high speed right now, getting schools ready and everything, but if you could just include that one right now. It's, it is really rough on the exit road.
Is that down, behind Stroudham Park area or is it?
No, the exit road from the.
Exit row coming into, into the school?
Yeah.
Yep. Yep, we'll take a look at that.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Yen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Byrne. This is something that I'd like to ask if you could. I know this has to do with the wall, and thanks to the, the city and the department, the wall at the condo 945 Middlesex Street had been finished. However, if I could ask Mr. Byrne, you know, how you have barricade, and then at the end you blocked it off, keeping the barricade along the street like this, but open up this so the student will walk from Middlesex Street to Stock Close, we can walk through because it's all nice and clean, and then the wall is done. So the school starts next week. So if you could just open that and leave the wall as it is. Thank you.
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the council. Yes, as a matter of fact, we were, we were going to be removing those barriers. We got approval to remove those barriers today. However, we were in the process of moving three heating machines out of the, the high school to salvage them, and it just took longer than we anticipated. But that's on the docket to do over the next two days. We'll remove those barriers because we got approval to do that through the, the Building Department, and they did a nice job. It took a long process and a long time, and I know that the council was adamant and, and the due diligence to make that happen. And it finally came to reality here, and we're going to make sure those barriers get removed, and we'll sweep up that area.
Just want to say thank you. The neighbor right behind it, they were, she was very happy that the wall is done. And the barricade along the street, I would just, if you want to just keep it protecting the kids walking, but just open up this so it would be they walking all the way down. You know, this is also really a safety for the kids. But if you, if they move it, that will be fine too, no problem, sir. Thank you.
I, I think, through you, Mr. Mayor, I think probably from a safety feature, it's probably wise that we, we remove the barriers. I know that the residents and the condo associations have been looking to have this taken care of. And, you know, we can manipulate and move barriers back if we had to for a safety reason, but, you know, I think that it, it might be in our best interest to remove those for probably safety and probably anything to do with liability to the city.
No, any other comments? No other comments? Let me just a quick, 30 seconds to have a quick game plan. It is 9:39. We have five more motion response and also communications of an appointment as was the vote of City Manager, and then we have motions. And also, there's an executive session at the end. If we can, the next few minutes, if we can get to, at least to the motions anyway, and then we'll ask the body to see if they would want to, you know, go through all the motions or just do the executive sessions before 10 o'clock. With that said, just keep that in mind. Counselor Noonan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I would suggest that, you know, try as best we can go into, go through the motion response, and then I would say, I would file, I would request a motion to go to executive sessions, and then decision will be made whether or not to come back or not, and, you know, when it's past 10 o'clock.
Okay.
Before it's past 10 o'clock.
Mr. Managers, anything on the votes or the ordinance that need to be done tonight? Because I think we can bundle the, the votes real quick. If we can finish.
If we refer to a public here.
Okay, so we can move those things quick. So let's, Counselor Musia?
I agree with what Counselor Noonan says, but I want to just say, we can even fit in to bundle 7.1 to 7.18. Those are all the votes. We could get that. Not that I want to get it out of the way, but we, voting is very important here. We have to vote on that.
Absolutely. With that being said, let's start with the motion response N, South Common Gems Project. Counselor Musia?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I made that motion the last council meeting to see if we could have permission to have people go. I know that the city is doing a great job every Friday, whatever, one day that they do, and they do a tremendous job. However, it builds up every day. So in an effort to try to get the very people that are causing the, the commotion, the, you know, the, you know, garbage and everything else, we've solicited them to go across the street and help us to clean the park. So last Tuesday, we had five homeless people go across the street and clean up the park. They did a tremendous job. So having said that, I wish to thank the DPW Street Division, the Parks Department, for the great cooperation of supplying this group of volunteers, bags and gloves and masks, and the work was completed. They did a great job. And we, we know that we've been offered the opportunity to call DPW and have them come and pick up the trash that was collected there. So this is a great cooperation, but we want to empower the very people that are causing the, the mess over there, and, and they're doing it. We get five already. So thanks to Robin Brown as well. She's the organizer of that. And since I'm in the South Common over there, I know I'll never meet the, any comments or whatever at the very end. But we are having, so save the date, we're having an overdose awareness day on August 31st. It's on a Wednesday from 2:00 to 6:00 at that South Common. All those agencies that you saw earlier at the Subcommittee on the, those organizations that help with their different homeless and housing and you name it, they're, they're going to be there. So this is a very good awareness day. So thank you for letting me get that announcement in because I don't know when that would happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. No other comments? We'll now go to motion response O, Pollup Memorial Library Elevator Repairs. Any comment, Counselor Noonan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Managers and Commissioner Byrne for the report. I know, you know the importance of it. I know you're waiting for the, the companies. I know you're waiting for the, the company's exact, you know, the scope of work and the cost estimate to that. So, you know, any, anytime you get it, you know, you get on it and it'd be great. Thanks, thanks.
Any comment, Mr. Manager or Mr. Byrne? If none, we'll go to the next line item. Motion response P. Lighting upgrades on Jewett Street and Center Street. Any comment, Counselor Robinson?
Thank you very much for this. I spoke to the business owners and they're thrilled. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Motion response Q. Low police response to loud parties in the acre neighborhood. Any comment, Counselor Noon or Counselor Young?
I, thank you for the report from the Police Department. I will print it and then we'll pass it on to all the neighbors in those area so they understand what, what the city have done. So, thank you. Thank you to the Police Department.
Any comment, Counselor Noon? Here on none, go to motion response R. Update on abandoned building on Cross Street. Any comment, Counselor Young?
Thank you for the report and I, I'm all done. I spoke with the CBA and everything should be okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. We go to the last motion response S. Update on crosswalk painting at school bus stops. Counselor Rourke or Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My only comment would be just if we could try to do the ones right around the schools. I noticed even right at the Rogers School right up here, the STEM, the main crosswalk going across Gorham Street isn't painted. So, if we could just try to do the ones, I wasn't talking about every single one of them. I know that it might have come across that way, but I was talking about the ones right around the schools. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. I just want to let the council know, we are in the process of trying to bring somebody else on. We typically would have three members on that team. We actually only have two right now and one is out on an injury. So, we have one person. So, we're, we're making, making some, making some things go rather quickly. Very important, extremely important around the schools.
It would be nice if it could be done. I mean, like I said, the one at the Moody's School was also not done, so just right there at the schools.
Okay, thank you, Counselor.
No other comments? We have taken up the information reports. Now need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Janess. On favor of the eye, opposed, you know, the eyes have it. The motion is carry. Let me try to take it up to the motions and quickly for two minutes, we can get there and then we can make a decision, either go through the motion or go through the executive session, okay? Motion 6.2, Communication. Appointment of Fatima Al Motafik and Megan Rourke to Low Cultural Council. Any comment? Motion to adopt by Counsel Robinson, second by Counselor...
Mr. Mayor, I just had a quick question. We're looking, moving forward, when we're putting people on boards, we're checking residency requirements, right? Because I've seen in the past that we've had members that ended up not being residents and they had to step back from appointments. So, I just want to make sure that we're following this.
Mr. Manager, maybe to make it quickly...
Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. We check resumes. Ms. McGovern, if we could double check on that. I mean, we check resumes. We assume people are telling us the truth.
So, we can take a vote by pending the residency of each candidate. So, we had a first by Robinson, second by, I believe it was by Young. All in favor of the eye, opposed, you know, the eyes have it. Motion's carry. 6.3, Appointment of Allison Keegan to Board of Health. No comment. Motion to adopt by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor Gitcher. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Young?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Gitcher?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy? Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Any yeses?
6.4, Communication. Resignation of Gary Perrin from Zoning Board of Appeals. Motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Noon, second by Counselor Drinkwater. On favor of the eye, opposed, you know, the eyes have it. Motion's carry. Motion by Counselor Mercier to bundle the votes 7.1 to 7.18.
But, Ms., Ms. Noon, I have a quick question on 7.1 and then 7.15. I just need the, let me start with the 7.1. If I may have, this is the property...
Counselor Young, I've got to interrupt real quick. We can take the vote and they can make comments after I read all the items line real quick. So, that was by Mercier, second by Counselor Noon. Mr. Clerk, please roll call from 7.1 through 7.18, please.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Young?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Gitcher?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Counselor Mercier? Yes.
Any yeses?
Okay, Counselor Young, did you have a comment?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to you, to the manager. 7.193 Mammoth Road, it's a firehouse and on the firehouse, it has written on it, say John Barry Gannon Memorial Station, Engine Number Eight. If I would, I, if I may ask the manager to let the new owner, tell the new owner to keep the name on the building. It would be greatly appreciated to recognize, you know, the Mr. Gannon for his dedication to the, to the city of Lo. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, through you to the council, that, Counsel, that is happening and that is in the sale contingency.
Okay, thank you. With 10 minutes left on the clock, Counselor Noon, would you like to make a motion?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I have some comments on 7.16 before we bypass the rest of this.
I'm sorry?
I said I have some comments on 7.16 before we leave this section of the agenda.
Counselor Janess?
Thank you.
No, I have a 7.15, a quick question for the manager for, because this is the property at 571 Broadway, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, through the man, through you, through the manager. It seems like the property owned by this entity for a while and I don't understand and I need clarification why it come back to the council now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. That was actually a Scribner error. There was an error, so therefore they had to come back and rewrite it. It was just an error on the, I believe it was on the title. So, that's, as we're all required in real estate to come back and make sure that it is correct.
Counselor Janess?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the City Manager, I just wanted to touch on 7.16, which is the license agreement to use the roof of the Roy Garage for a gala event. I think it's a really cool idea. It's a great use of a space that is underutilized. However, I have some serious concerns about the state of the Roy Garage and, to be honest, all of our garages, with the possible exception of the Hamilton Canal Garage. This is another scenario where, you know, Counselor Gitcher has talked about deferred maintenance being ignored and that's, that's very clear to anyone who's walked through these garages. I won't go through all the nitty-gritty of, of the email I sent earlier, but the Roy Garage is in need of some serious help to be a safe, welcoming parking facility, never mind a host of a gala event. So, I just ask that, you know, we spend some time and effort on cleaning these garages up and making them more welcome. I know that some of my neighbors are actually scared to park in the garage and walk out of it at night and these aren't people who aren't used to being in an urban environment. These are people who've chosen to live downtown. There's lighting issues, there's cleanliness issues, et cetera, et cetera, and I'd be more than happy to walk through any of these garages with, with anybody to point out the things that have been pointed out to me and the things that I see every day. So, I just want to make sure that that was on the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Janess. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Counselor, thank you very much for bringing that up. We did, we did speak with Mr. Ryan over the parking and we have Laz, who is our parking folks. We're engaging them a little bit more. I think things have been missing over there, but I'm hoping that definitely before this gala takes place, we need to take a, take a real look at all of our maintenance in all of our garages. So, well timed, well placed and absolutely, it needs to be cleaned up.
Thank you very much. I look forward to engaging with the team on this as we move forward.
Thank you, Counselor. Before I call on you, Mr. Counselor Noon, I understand that the ordinance has to be taken out of the way tonight. So, need a motion, we already, the administration's requesting to take out line item 8.2. Now need a motion to bundle 8.1, 8.3, 8.4 to refer to public hearing on September 13 at 7:00 PM by Counsel Robinson, second by Counselor Gitcher. On favor of the eye, opposed, you know, the eyes have it. The motion is carry. Counselor Noon?
Mr. Mayor, if we can take the executive session out of orders?
Motion by Counsel Noon to take the executive session out of order, second by Counselor Gitcher. So, let me just ask the, the will of the body, do you want to go meet past 10 to discuss the executive session tonight? Would that be the feeling? If that is the case, we need a motion to table the items that we did not complete tonight to the following meeting. We will not, we will recess and go into the executive session and we will not return to the chamber.
Mr. Mayor, are all the ordinances that are run here tonight all scheduled for a public hearing on September 13th?
That's correct and we just passed that, so we have taken care of that.
All right, good.
Other petitions as well? Okay. All right, so we do have a... About, about 9.2? Do we need to take care of that? Okay. Okay, let's take care of the petitions. That is 10 point, is it 10.1 through 10.5, Mr. Clerk? 10.2 to 10.5. Motion by Counselor Noon to bundle 10.2, 10.3, 10.5, second by Counselor Mercier. This is the motion to refer to public hearing for all three on September 13, 2022 at 7:00 PM by Counsel Noon, second by Counselor Mercier. On favor of the eye, opposed, you know, the eyes have it. Motion's carry. These are all the items that need to be taken care of tonight, Mr. Clerk? Okay, so now going back, so we need a motion to table the unfinished items to the following meeting by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Robinson. And a motion's passed, a motion by Counselor Noon to take up the executive session right now and we will not return to the chamber. We will adjourn from the executive session. The executive session is item number 12, to consider and discuss ongoing negotiations relative to the former Low District Court Building pursuant to the provision of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38 and Section 21/6, for the possible purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, public discussions of which may have detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the city and further to discuss matters of litigation, Dr. Spock Trust, eminent domain, public discussion of which may have a detrimental effect on the city's position. Need a motion to, need a motion that was already adopted by Counselor Noon and Counselor Mercier.